Okay, folks, we're going to call to order our meeting. Hello, we're going to call our meeting to order, thank you. All right, we will call to order our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, our last regular meeting for the 2019 year, December 10th, 2019. And will our clerk please call the roll? And can we please have everyone be quiet? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Our roll call, Trustee Calvert. Trustee Cottle? President Simon Holland?
Here.
Trustee Kelly is delayed or will not be here.
He's on his way.
He is on his way.
He was with the Governor, he gets a pass.
So he is delayed, some excuse, I want to note. Trustee Minneto? Vice President Raymond? Clerk Taylor, I am here, and Student Trustee Noble?
President.
All right, thank you very much, Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item is Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask Principal Josh Rosenbloom to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenbloom. And please, everyone, take advantage of looking around the room with these wonderful holiday cards that have been done by our students. Every one of them is a winner, we're excited to have these. Thank you to all of the folks who helped make that happen. Our next item is Action to Adopt the Agenda. And two things I need to make the Board aware of. We're going to move Agenda Item 5.01, the Holiday Card Contest, to immediately following the consent agenda to accommodate some families that are here. At the conclusion of this item, the Board will recess to allow four pictures with the finalists. And then, I regret to say that we need to pull Item 5.03, Presentation on Safe Roots to School. One of our staff members was unable to be here due to emergency circumstances and the item will be placed on a future agenda. So if we can have a motion to pull Agenda Item 5.03 and approve the agenda as revised.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Second by Trustee Cottle, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We'll go on to our consent agenda, which is Items 2.01 through 2.0... No, not zero, 2.19. And we have quite a bit of information about all of those. I want to note, let's see, on... Let's see, the Stop Loss Insurance Coverage, which item is that, JJ?
2.14.
2.14. Stop Loss Insurance Coverage was incorrectly listed as December 31st, 2019, should be December 31st, 2020, the ending date for that coverage in our contract. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Or does anyone want any of those items pulled for separate discussion? No questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Thank you, motion by Vice President Raymond, is there a second? Second by Trustee Minneto, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we will move to Item 5.01, which is one of our favorite things of the year. And that is the Presentation on Possible Action to Select the Ninth Annual Holiday Card Contest Winners for elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. And with us today, Irene Payne, our Chief Communication and Community Engagement Officer, and Melissa Gillis, our Graphic Communications Specialist. Ms. Payne?
So, good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Trustees, Interim Superintendent McNeil. Can you believe we've been doing this for nine years? So here we are, once again, to talk about our wonderful holiday card contest. And for the record, I should say, I'm Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. And I'm joined this afternoon by Melissa Gillis, who is the school district's graphic design specialist. And with that, I'm going to just hand straight over to Melissa to kick this off.
Okay, for the record, Melissa Gillis, Office of Communications and Community Engagement. We're excited to be sharing with you today the annual Holiday Card Art Competition. The contest was created nine years ago in order to try to increase the visual arts awareness in our schools and education. The artwork can include painting, drawing, photography, computer-generated illustrations, or any combination of those. This year, we had over 400 entries, and all the entries are hanging up around in the boardroom and out in the welcome center. And that kind of makes it nice for all the employees that work down here and visitors that come visit during the month. The winning artwork is used for the district's holiday card that is sent out to the community. In the past, the trustees would select one overall winner, but this year, we've expanded it to be three winners. So it will be one winner from each of the elementary, middle, and high school levels. The three top winners will all receive gift cards, and all nine finalists will receive their artwork in a nice frame to take with them. Next, we'd like to take a few minutes to display all nine finalists' entries and just talk about them a little bit and appreciate the amazing creativity of these students. So this first one is an elementary school finalist. And we loved the use of color, as well as the crayon strokes, we thought kind of evoked a sense of excitement about the holidays. And we thought it really embodied the image of like a child's vision of whimsy with the holiday season.
Santa and the sleigh.
Yeah, and then the second elementary school finalist. So what we were really impressed with this is that there's multiple elements in the one illustration. And the use of crayon and the colors, and how cohesive all the different elements are that really sum up the holiday season. We thought this was a very nice submission.
This third elementary school finalist, this was an interesting entry because it used three different mediums. So it has watercolor, and marker, and crayon. And I don't know if you've ever tried working with watercolor before, but it is hard, it's a hard type of medium to work with. And we just loved the expressive snowman. We just thought he had so much personality, and he was just very, very cute.
And then moving on to the three middle school finalists. So this one, the view that you have on the screen really doesn't do it justice. The amount of work that has gone into the trees, into the sky, into the snow is really makes the card really quite magical. And someone with a lot of precision, a lot of patience, and a lot of skill worked on this card.
This is another middle school finalist. And we thought this was so cute and clever with the play on words, Happy Owl Days. And it is a computer-generated piece, which I was very impressed with how the artist captured the lighting on the owls, as well as the texture in their feathers, and the like snowflakey background. And I just thought it was really well done, and our team liked it as well.
And then, how could you not absolutely adore this card? It is simple, but executed absolutely beautiful to a really high standard of work. And we just thought those three snowmen would just melt your heart.
This is one of our high school finalists. And this was also a computer-generated illustration. And we really liked the use of the typography with the Happy Holidays, how it's on that festive-looking ribbon. And the detail in this is really amazing. If you could see it up close, you would notice even more. But the expressions on the characters was really well done. And the use of the colors really brings the main focus of the people out to the foreground, and with the beautiful background. It was just very well done.
So another high school finalist, and another computer-generated piece of artwork. And it's really interesting to note that over the years, how we've seen just the transition to more computer-generated artwork. And for those of you who have not necessarily designed anything on a computer, if you look at the snow on the tree, there's a huge amount of work just in that one element. And just the beauty of that is really quite remarkable. And we felt like there was a really good use of color, design, and an awful lot of hard work went into this.
Beautiful.
And then our last finalist is this high school piece. And being that we are the brand ambassadors for the school district, we immediately responded to the logo on top of the tree.
That's cute.
Indeed, the correct logo on top of the tree.
And they're kind of small on the screen there, but the tree is decorated with all sorts of little arts or school supplies and art supplies. We thought that was very clever, and you can see a lot of detail in that tree. And then, as a designer, I was very impressed with the typography, like the Happy Holidays is almost like a whole illustration in itself. And the background texture and everything is lovely. You can't see it on there, but on the original one, you can see that the artist has used like some glitter pen too, and it just has like a really beautiful texture.
So those are our nine finalists. And now, trustees, it's over to you to do the main work of this evening, I think. And for those folks who are sat behind me, and those artists who are sat behind me, and those who are watching, I'll just explain the voting. So the trustees have had opportunity to look at the artwork for a number of days and to contemplate and to consider which ones they like and who they would like to vote for. So Ms. JJ has just handed out the voting sheets. And I can see the trustees are now deciding who to vote for. When you have made your decision, if you could let JJ know, and she will collect the individual voting sheets, and then we'll collate them, so that we have a winner in each category. And we also have the two finalists. So we'll have a winner and two finalists in each elementary, middle, and high school. What I would say to all the student artists behind me and to their teachers and their families, don't go anywhere because the plan is, I will announce the finalists. And as President Simon Holland said, we'll then go into recess and we'll want to take photos of you all with your teachers, your family. And at the same time, you will get your gift card, and you will get your wonderful piece of artwork framed in a beautiful frame. So don't go anywhere, and we need to have some music or something now.
Can I ask all the artists who are here, all the students who are the artists, to stand up, please, and we can give you a round of applause? Yeah, stand up, stand up. Awesome work, just amazing work. And I want to thank all of you, I want to thank your families, and I want to thank your teachers that supported you in doing this. And just a big thank you to all of the 401 entries into our card contest. This is really, really heartwarming to see all of this. I wish we could do it every month, you know, have an art contest every month. I know Irene's looking at me, and she's about to pull her hair out.
There's quite a amount of work involved, so.
But it is, every one of you is a winner to us. And we are so appreciative of your artwork, your talent, and that you're sharing your gifts with all of us. So we'll give JJ a moment.
And you can imagine how difficult it is to receive over 400 individual pieces of art and then start to bring it down. And it takes many... We go around many times to start to reduce it, and reduce it, and reduce it. And we kind of fall out, we disagree, we fight a little bit, and then eventually, we agree on the three finalists.
Could we have Charles take a picture of all of the artists who are here with the Board while JJ's working on that? Could we have the artists come up here? Yeah, and all of the artists come up and have a photo with the Board?
I want to come through here?
Sure. They'll just stand back here and honor all these wonderful young people. Yeah, close in.
Okay, then, so the results are in. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to quickly go through the cards and just give a shout out to the individual artists and the school and their grade. And then, at the end of each, so at the end of elementary, then I will announce the winner. When I've gone through all the middle school, then I will announce the winner, and the same for high school. So the first one we're going to give props to is Christopher Trejo, fifth grader from Lemon Valley Elementary School. And then we have, yes. Kennedy Rhea, fourth grade from Beasley. And Mason Sapien Ramos, kindergarten from Lemelson STEM Academy. And the winner is Kennedy. So moving on to middle school. So this one was drawn by Ashley Dedmond, eighth grade from Billinghurst Middle School. This Owl Days was Salvador Porres Vill Pandau, eighth grader from Traynor Middle School. And then we have Aleah Heffron, eighth grader from Billinghurst Middle School. And the winner in this category for our middle school is Aleah Heffron, this one. And then moving on to high school. So this one, Amber Mitchell from Reed High School, 12th grade. Jesse Willoughby, 10th grader from Reno High School. And Stephanie Yanez, 11th grader from Worcester High School. And the winner is Jesse Willoughby, 10th grader from Reno High School. So now, we can go into recess, we can do the presentations and take the individual photos.
Okay, the Board will be in recess for a few minutes to do those photographs and presentations, thank you Irene.
Okay, you're very welcome.
And thank you all. Everybody's a winner. Everybody's a winner.
Everybody look this way, freeze your smiles. One, two, three. And now look at Charles. Keep freezing your smiles.
Is Ashley here? Okay. Okay. So let's have Salvador.
Can you guys take a picture too?
Yes, yeah, there you go.
You're gonna be a graphic designer in your adult life? You should, you're pretty good. Everyone look at us and freeze your smiles. Nice big smiles. Lovely. Charles is still snapping away. Or you need us to move, okay? Okay, big smiles.
Yes, you can.
So do we have, um, okay, do we have Amber? Is Amber here?
There she is.
Amber, Amber, yeah. Nice, that was really good. Really good.
Christmas holiday. It is. Okay, let's see your smiles. Keep smiling and don't stop.
Oh, it didn't go. Alright.
Charles, take a picture of your head.
Okay. Gun like screen.
There, okay. One, two, three. Okay, Mom needs a picture.
Alright.
Okay.
I think we're done.
Alright.
Alright. Great job.
So is Jessie?
Yeah, yeah, good job Josh.
Is Jessie there?
But you wore the sweater, so.
Well done Jessie.
Alright. Great job.
Okay, everyone looking this way and smiling. Okay, don't quit smiling. Perfect.
Right. And then smiling is Stephanie. Come on Stephanie.
Good job, yeah, good job. Stephanie.
Do you want to take a picture with your phone?
No, it's...
No, okay.
No! Reach out.
Everyone smiles up towards Charles. And there we have it. We'll put the furniture back in place.
Thank you Irene and the team for putting all this together. Melissa, thank you so much. This one my thing. Okay, well, we will be back in session and that was pretty uplifting to see all that wonderful artwork and all of the wonderful service by our team to help make that happen, so thank you everybody. We will go now to public comment. Do we have public comment, JJ?
Not for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to budget items, which is our items under number four. And item 4.01 is discussion, presentation, and possible action regarding the adoption of Washoe County School District Board Resolution 19-017, a resolution to augment the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget and approval of augmentation and transfers and contingency transfers for the fiscal year 1920 budget. Mark Mathers and Mike Schroeder are here. And this is a, uh, an administrative function and it's a typical routine thing that we do. I just, I don't want anybody to be alarmed that we're augmenting the budget. It's a good thing, we had more revenue, so we need to recognize that. So I'll turn it over to Mark and to Mike.
Thank you President Simon Holland. Good evening, interim Superintendent McNeil and members of the board. I'm Mike Schroeder, Budget Director. We're seeking approval of a resolution to augment the budget, the current year budget. There is five funds we're looking to augment. Augment the General Fund, Building and Sites, Capital Projects, Special Education, and Class Size Reduction Funds. Also as part of this item, we do transfers, we're allowed to do transfers. We've reported those to you earlier throughout pretty much each month of this fiscal year. And we're also allowed to do contingency transfers if they're approved by the board. So we'll be doing all of that as part of this item today. Our main fund is the General Fund and we're augmenting that overall budget by about $5.9 million. And most of that is related to, uh, opening fund balance. We've attached schedules in part of your board packet for each of these funds. It indicates the final budget, which was approved back on June 25th versus what we're proposing right now for our December augmented budget. And each of those indicate a change column. The General Fund is a little more complicated, so I've attached schedules in the back, pages nine and 10. And it kind of walks you through each step. I won't go in detail into that, but if you want to see kind of how each of these changes affects the revenue accounts, accounts in those categories, it's kind of detailed right there. But General Fund overall, $5.9 million, most of that is related to the opening fund balance, which is $5.54 million. Uh, that doesn't mean we get all of that, a portion of that is related to encumbrances. And encumbrances are really related to the prior year. We have budget authority. Departments and schools entered legal purchase orders to get goods or services. Not all those goods or services are delivered prior to the end of the year, June 30th. So, when we presented the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report earlier in November, we indicated that a portion of our ending fund balance was assigned for encumbrances and school carryover. So about $1.7 million of that, opening fund balance is related to those items. That leaves about, uh, $3.7 million left over. Normally it'd be nice to just add that to the ending fund balance. But we kind of have to look at our whole big picture and say, do we have a need for that? And in this case, we do have a need. As part of our original budget, we had anticipated, uh, hopefully negotiating our ESIP bar benefit out of the contracts. We were successful with a couple of the bargaining units, but not all of them. So this budget restores that ESIP, which was one of your consent items today, and that's about $1.1 million. So essentially, we're using a portion of that opening fund balance to provide that, provide for that. Uh, also, we had SB 551, which was approved by the legislature, uh, this past spring. And, um, they gave us extra money, which helped us resolve our budget deficit and balance our budget uh, to, for operational purposes. After the fact, it was determined that a portion of that was supposed to go to charter schools, about $230,000. So, we didn't know about that at the time we did our final budget. So we're using a portion of that opening fund balance to, uh, provide for that. So essentially, we're using, of the $5.4 million increase, we're using about $2 point, the $1.3 million of it for expenditure type purposes and $1.7 million for encumbrances and carryovers. So our ending fund balance will increase by just about $2.5 million. And that puts us currently budgeted at $37.5 million roughly, which is about 8% of our expenditures. And our board policy is to be 8 to 10%. So, we're right in there with this December augmented budget. The other major one was a $600,000 special deal we made with, uh, Nevada Energy. Uh, through leadership team, we decided that, based on priorities and the vote process, that about $200,000 of that was really needed to help replace computers. $100,000 of that, we were dedicating to suicide prevention, which was on the consent items tonight through Children's Cabinet. And $300,000 is just going into contingency at this point in time as there wasn't a need yet to utilize those funds. And those are the major items on the General Fund and how they've been applied. The next ones would be contingency. During the course of the year, early in the year, we approved a Pathways to Independence item for Special Education that required about $36,000. The superintendent search had been approved by the board. That was not part of the original budget, so we're using the contingency, proposing to use the contingency account for that in the amount of $60,000. Uh, as part of the legislature, they approved a school safety specialist, but they didn't provide funding for that. So we're anticipating hiring that position in January. That'll take about $56,000. And part of all the viral outbreaks we've had, we have to deep clean schools. And the provision for that is not in the budget, and that'll take about $45,000. So, that's about $197,000 we're seeking approval to transfer from the contingency account to those various expenditure accounts to provide for those. Uh, Building and Sites is capital projects, are mainly opening fund balances that we're augmenting for. And these are all previously approved items that you've gone through the board and approved. When we do the prior year budget, we're creating budget authority to enter into a big contract to build a high school or an elementary school. So we, so we have to provide that in the budget. Obviously, we don't finish it in one year, so there's leftover money. That's part of our opening fund balance to continue those projects.
Mike, just a quick question on, uh, the Building and Sites Fund. We had an increase in rent revenue?
Yeah, you will see the, uh, cell tower come through the board. But that's really most of that.
That's what that is, okay.
That is what that is.
Alright, thank you.
And that goes to the schools that hold those cell towers, most of that money.
Thank you.
And that's most of it. So if there's any specific questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions, anyone has? Okay, looks good. And, um, thank you for, um, bringing good news of increased revenues and a healthy ending fund balance, which we haven't always had here. So we're, again, we're grateful to, uh, the legislature for funding for this year. But, uh, this is, this is great to have, everybody have worked hard to make sure that we came in with, uh, with excess fund balance. So, um, appreciate that. That's, that's a lot of sacrifice by a lot of people to make some of those things happen. Any other questions? And thank you all for a good job of, uh, of sharpening the pencils and dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Yes, Superintendent.
Just absolutely, that's what I was just going to say, is to thank you so much to, to Mark and Mike. Um, there's a tremendous amount of hours that go into this augmented budget. And so I, we all truly appreciate all of your work. And nice tie, Mr. Schroeder.
I was going to compliment that, but I, thank you for, for taking that. Vice President Raymond, you have your finger on the light switch there.
Just ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
So I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 19-017, a resolution to augment the fiscal year 2019-20 budget, approves budget transfers as proposed, and approved contingency transfers.
Thank you, sir, second. Second by Trustee Minetto, a motion by Vice President Raymond. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Thank you much, thank you very much. Appreciate all that work. Okay, we will now go on to 5.02, which is discussion and acceptance of the audit report for I Can Do Anything ICDAs Charter High School for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. Uh, Mark is back, and Rob Luna, and you can introduce the other person, I don't know.
Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil, and members of the board. For the record, I'm Rob Luna, I'm the Controller for the district. And I'm joined here today with David Schaefer, Certified Public Accountant with the firm Barnard Vogler &amp; Company. We are here today to present to the board the audited financial statements for I Can Do Anything Charter School, ICDAs, for the period ending June 30, 2019. Normally, district-sponsored charter schools would present to their own boards. Uh, we're in, we're here today because, presenting to the district board because the district is now the governing body for ICDAs, uh, since the school is closed. State law requires that a charter school that is closed must still have its financial statements presented to the governing board in the final year of operation. This presentation is going to be similar to last month's where I, representatives from Ida Bailey presented the audited financial statements for the district. Since ICDAs is much smaller, obviously, this is going to be a, a more concise presentation. With, so please ask questions at any time. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Schaefer.
Oh, my name's David Schaefer.
Welcome.
As Rob mentioned, and I'm the Engagement Director with the firm of Barnard Vogler. So, I'll just hit on a few items that are of relevance to Washoe County School District within the financial statements of ICDAs. So we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of insurance, assurance provided, which states that the financial statements are materially, materially correct. And the financial statements are on the liquidation basis of accounting, since these are the final financial statements as the school is no longer a going concern. And this requires all expenses to be accrued that are involved with the closing process, including document destruction, additional salaries, that sort of thing. And that was in addition to $1,000, as discussed in Note 1. So a brief overview of the financial statements. There's the management discussion and analysis, which gives some comparative information. Uh, this shows that, um, revenue decreased $52,000 and the expenses decreased a lot more significantly, $293,000 due to fewer teachers and a landlord giving, uh, a rent decrease. Then there's a statement of net position in liquidation. And I want to point this out to the board that this, there's some net pension liabilities and related pension deferrals, but these aren't the direct obligation of the school district. It'll be, um, put into future PERS, uh, actuarial, actuarial reports based on percentage of contributions for all PERS participants. And then, then moving on, we have the fund financial statements. And this shows that the fund balance increased from a negative amount to, um, to a positive amount of, increased by $101,000. So, in the end, there's a restricted fund balance of $56,037. And this is the ultimate, um, this is what Washoe County School District ultimately would be the recipient of. And this is the amount of cash, plus the receivables, less the payables, which are mostly for the liquidation, accrued payroll for the teacher salaries during the summer, and less amounts for, amounts due to the state for DSA troupe and textbook spending, deficiency of textbook spending. So, quickly in the notes, there's, uh, the plan of liquidation is discussed in Note 1. And Note 3 discusses some budget violations. There was some over expenditures of budget, some of which was because of the liquidation expenses. And there was also some budgets, the, the budget process wasn't, uh, they weren't adopted in accordance with state statutes, the, the original budget. So then, moving along, uh, Note 10 discusses the restricted fund balance, which, which I've discussed already. And then Note 11 is a subsequent event that states that the ICA board was disbanded on September 3rd, 2019 and taken over by Washoe County School District. And last, I want to point out that there's a internal control report. And we did find a, three internal control issues. But these issues are, there's nothing outstanding and they don't need to be addressed. It's just something we found, and now that the school's closed, it's, there's nothing to worry about.
It's a moot point.
Yeah. So that's a brief overview of the financial statements. Is there any questions on the audit process or anything more detailed?
Any questions from trustees? Anything anyone wants to add? Ms. Cooper, did you want to add anything, or Mr. Luna? Okay, I know this has been a painful process to close the school. And, um, we can have a conversation about the closure at another time. But, uh, um, we're, you know, it's been a very long journey, uh, with ICDAs. And of course, as the first charter school in Washoe County, it was tremendously disappointing to have, to have to liquidate and, and close the school. But we thank you for all of this work to reconcile all of their, um, financial affairs. Anything anyone need to add? Rob, anything you want to add?
No, that covers everything, thank you.
Okay, alright. Um, if there's no other discussion, we would entertain a motion. Oh, any public comment? Sorry, okay. Um, so we would need a motion to accept the report. Dr. Taylor?
Um, Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the audit report for I Can Do Anything ICDAs Charter High School for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019.
Thank you, is there a second? Second by Vice President Raymond. And again, thank you for the work to close this out. Um, it is historic, uh, and, um, we, we wish them all well and hope that they will have, uh, have a better future than we've had. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you.
And thank you, Rob and Mark. Mark, another stunning performance, absolutely stunning. It is, it is the gold, I know, why does the finance guy wear a gold tie? Okay, we are now on to item 5.03, presentation, oh no, we pulled that one, sorry, 5.04. Discussion Possible Action pursuant to Board Policy 7110, Naming of Schools and School Facilities, and Administrative Regulation 7111, Naming of Schools and Other District Facilities for the Board of Trustees to provide direction to staff to work with the School Naming Committee regarding various options to be considered for naming the Career and Technical Education Campus located at the current Proctor R. Hug High School and/or other possible and future district buildings for the following semifinalists previously presented to the board for consideration. Feimster, Dolores Feimster, and Debbie Smith, including a combination of those names. And this is for possible action. I do want to start out thanking everybody who has been part of this process. We had hours of testimony the last time this came through. Uh, it was, uh, the, uh, conclusion of the board at that time that we have further discussion about opening up the possibilities for the naming committee to consider. Because they had not, um, they didn't have direction from us to consider things other than the names that were presented to them for the Career and Technical Education High School. A lot of the discussion revolved around, um, the difficulty of choosing just one name for that school when we have, um, two very deserving, uh, individuals and families that, uh, we want to make sure are recognized in our district somehow. But we don't, we didn't have the mechanism last time to do that. I want to be clear that we are not picking a name for the Career and Technical Education High School tonight. Um, we are not making that decision tonight. I do want to provide, um, benefit of a conversation that I had with, uh, Greg Smith, Debbie Smith's, um, husband, on behalf of the Smith family. Uh, they, uh, were grateful and are grateful that, um, Debbie Smith is being considered. And they're also, um, emotionally exhausted by this process. They have been to meetings, they have been to public comment, and, and every time this comes up, it's very difficult for the family because of the loss of Debbie Smith. They also have been at this a long time and, uh, have, um, voluntarily had Debbie Smith's name removed from consideration uh, from other schools. And, uh, so, we find ourselves in a, in a very difficult situation here. But I did want to again clarify, we're not going to pick the name of the Career and Technical Education High School tonight. Uh, and, um, Greg Smith's, um, request of the board is that when it does come to the board for decision, that we just decide, that we decide, um, among the alternatives and, um, make it easier on their family. And I appreciate that, and I wanted to share that with all of you. And I appreciate that, and I wanted to share that with all of you. So... And the discussion tonight is whether or not to refer it back to the School Naming Committee and what options this Board would like to be considered and what flexibility we want to give the School Naming Committee in making a new recommendation for us. So, does that kind of summarize where we are tonight? All right. Thank you, Irene. Well, I'll turn it over to Ms. Payne and Samantha in her new role.
Thank you very much, President Simon Holland. Good evening, trustees. Good evening, Interim Superintendent McNeil. For the record, I am Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer for the Washoe County School District. So, yes, you summed that up very effectively, and Sam and I appreciate that. I should say, I should let Sam introduce herself.
Samantha Frederickson, Public Relations Specialist.
Before we get into the meat of the conversation, I thought it might be useful just to do a very quick summary of the history of what has gone on before, just to bring us to this point in time. So, in the summer, it was in August that... Thank you. We started soliciting names for both schools. And when we talk about both schools, we're talking about the school at the Wild Creek location and then the CTE school, which at that time was at the current Hug campus. So, we started soliciting names for both of those schools in August. And then, it went to the School Naming Committee in October. And the School Naming Committee narrowed it down to 10 semifinalists, went back to the School Naming Committee on November 6, and they narrowed it down to three finalists for the CTE campus and one finalist for the school at Wild Creek. And the three finalists for the school, the CTE Academy, was Feimster, Debbie Smith, and Michael Lansbury. And then, the recommendation for the school at Wild Creek was Proctor R. Hug. It came to the Board on November 12. And you can see, that's the motion you made on November 12. And what happened during that Board meeting was that the school located at the Wild Creek location was named Proctor R. Hug with effective August 2022. And then, as you know, there was a lot of conversation around the name of the CTE Academy. And what I would just point out, just for your edification, was that the naming committee put forward the potential name Feimster, representing the whole Feimster family. And then, during the discussions at the Board meeting, it kind of morphed into Dolores Feimster. So, I would just bring that to your attention. Anyway, as you know, there was a lengthy discussion. That was the motion that was made, and that has brought us here today. And I'll hand over to Sam to take it forward.
Thank you, Irene.
So, as you all know, I'm now in this role and will be the staff liaison for the School Naming Committee. So, the School Naming Committee's next meeting is on February 5. And at that meeting, of course, one of the topics will be to discuss a new name for our latest elementary school, which will be up in Cold Springs. But we can, of course, also have the committee discuss these further options. So, what I listed up here were some of the options that you all discussed at the last meeting, which includes utilizing both names in the naming of the new CTE Academy, renaming existing buildings, naming buildings within the school, or naming future buildings. And so, whatever we do, we will, of course, want to get community feedback as per our Board policy and administrative regulation. So, that will be a part of it. And today, we're just really here now looking for guidance for what to do next with the School Naming Committee. And now, I'll turn it over to you all.
All right. Thank you, Sam. And I would open it up to Board members for... Well, let's first, can we just hear from Board members if there are any questions or any comments anyone wants to make right now? Okay. Well, okay, go ahead, Dr. Taylor.
Just wanted to say that, but I think having that additional information is going to be... I mean, I think having, allowing, asking the School Naming Committee, it's just going to give us an opportunity to have some additional information on what options are because it's a very difficult decision. And I think the more options that we know that we can consider, then hopefully, we can do justice to each of these women who certainly deserve to be honored and recognized for their own reasons, so...
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll go to public comment. Thank you, JJ.
John White.
Mr. White, welcome.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the service of the trustees here, and I know you guys work hard. I wanted to say a little bit about this, referring it back to the committee and to maybe a little bit of a focus. And if I'm off-subject, let me know. But it seems to me that this situation between the Smith and the Feimster is really an individual, very deserving, Smith versus this whole community. Because I... You know, we have, as a community, been made fun of. Reno 9/11 is coming back. We used to be the Mississippi of the West, and some people think we still are. And it seems to me that we need to close the door on all of that and that one of the ways to do that would be to honor Dolores Feimster. I was Darrell's, her son's, best friend, I think. And Darrell was... I'm sure if Darrell were here, he would want it named after his mom, not after the Feimster family. But I told the naming committee a bit of a story about a horrible situation when I was at Reno High, some years ago. And we came back from Medford and we... A football game that we lost terribly. Dave Ricks was our quarterback, black fellow. And we went to the Mavs to get breakfast because that's when we got back. And he was asked to leave because he was black. This is our heritage. And I think if we can somehow go beyond the individual here, and certainly, Mrs. Smith is very deserving. But it really isn't going to advance the community itself. And then, I graduated from George Washington Law School. And how would you bifurcate George Washington? How would you hyphenate it or something like that? I don't think... I don't think that really can be very effectively done. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Teresa Navarro.
Ms. Navarro, welcome.
Thank you. Board members, as usual, I'm hoarse because the weather outside is hard on my asthma. So, I will try to be as brief as I can. I'm here regarding Dolores Feimster. I think one thing that I'd like you to know, especially hearing Mr. White, is that we're looking at a community school that has been around for many, many years. I've been here since 1972. And I remember when I first moved here, how hard it was myself to get a job here because of the color of my skin. That was really true. But I learned, and I, you know, you just learn to build Nevada. And we've changed in the last 20 years. And Dolores Feimster, I just want you to know that she gave 34 years of her life to Hug High School. And she, for her job as she worked, and not only during the hours that she worked, but after school. Because I got many calls, like I told you, her and I were friends. She would call me up, and the minute I could hear her voice, it was like, oh, my God. What do you need? Where do I need to go? Who's in trouble? Who can we help? I was a constant, constant, every day, doing something. Dolores was probably one of the greatest women that I've ever met. She was like my... I used to tell her she was my hero, and she used to tell me I was hers because we finally figured out that we... One day, we were talking about how many hours we put on volunteering our time. And it was interesting because she even said something that really made sense to me because it was true. She said that she volunteered because she didn't have any money. So, she couldn't give to certain organizations, but she could give her time. And that's exactly what I did as an activist, as I am right now for 45 years here in Reno, Nevada, is giving my time to the people that need it. And that's really important coming from Dolores for what she did for this community. And I know that she would... Darrell would be so proud of her to see that name Dolores Feimster, that school, that CTE school after her. I think it's very important to the community. And everyone on, everybody I've talked to has talked very highly about how it should be important because it is part of the community. And I just want to thank you for letting me come up here and talk on her behalf. And sorry for my voice trying to get it clear. And the only other thing I want to say is that I saw Dolores about a month before she died. And her hardest thing was the loss of Darrell, her son. And I had lost my son, so it was very easy for us to talk to each other and have secret meetings about how we felt and how hard it was to lose a child. You know, because you're not supposed to bury your child. A child is supposed to bury you. But I know that she would still be alive today if Darrell was. And so, I just wanted, please, please, consider Dolores Feimster's name on the CTE school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. And we're sorry for your loss as well.
Marilyn Jones.
Ms. Jones? I saw somebody had to leave. Yeah, okay.
Adrienne Feimster.
Ms. Feimster, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all, President and the trustees. Thank you for your support in this naming agenda. I appreciate your work. I'm going to go straight to the point. I know that clock goes fast. But I do notice that why is Feimster not being committed... Submitted to the naming committee? That there were four votes in support? I didn't hear that. I feel like it's not being transparent, and that transparency needs to be communicated. This is exactly what my grandmother fought against. With all due respect, I want to be straightforward. Let's not confuse or waste the naming committee's time. You all had a very thoughtful dialogue. It went around this room more than once. Here are the options you talked about: Feimster, Smith, Feimster, Smith, Smith, Feimster, Lansbury. And what the majority of the Board voted was for my grandmother. I'm baffled and confused at what is happening. And so is the general public. When all of you trustees went around the room and stated your support for Feimster, the confusion continues. The only item that should be moving forward is Debbie Smith, and can we name the AATC after her? Dolores Feimster should be on the agenda, and the follow-through should be done with what was decided as a trustee body. Naming the committee... The naming committee has worked incredibly hard, as stated again and again, and they gave their opinion. On top of that, the families and supporters are working hard, too. They're here sick, they're here coming off early, getting babysitters flying in, coming with medical issues. It is a lot on the families. I've lost two of them in this process. The other is my uncle's daughter. That was within three years. Just as you mentioned with the Smith family. They are... They've turned down several other opportunities to honor their loved one. And they're exhausted. I seen the body language at the last meeting. It is exhausting. But I will not tire because she deserves this honor. Senator Ratty suggested to move the letters forward, the hundreds of letters that have come in. Imagine the phone calls and text messages to the families. We've been handling those as well. So, now, there's some tough questions that I have to ask. Why is the naming process changing now? This is the same process that happened in all the other schools, the same exact process. But now that we're here to decide on the name, it's changing. Why are we holding Dolores Feimster hostage to secure the name for Debbie Smith in a future school? Move that forward and work to get her honor. It was clear, the vote is here for Feimster. Otherwise, we'd be talking about Hug Feimster, Feimster, Hug, Smith, Hug. We're not doing any of that. That needs to be recognized. The banners that were up here for Smith bringing W-1C bill, the very first school would have honored that effort. But why the most expensive $2 million school in the community that is rooted, that has such a legacy and history? That stuff needs to be paid attention to. I urge you to lead. This school is Dolores and Feimster, and the body spoke. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feimster. And I do want to clarify that what is before us today was the vote of the Board. There was a lot of discussion, and I know people were very torn. But that... What's before us today was the vote that the Board took, word for word. So, that's what we had to put on the agenda, so... Okay, is there more? Yes.
Mary Stewart.
Ms. Stewart, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for hearing me. I want to make a couple of points about Dolores Feimster. She was a very good friend of my mother's, and they were active in the NAACP together. And I think sometimes when we talk about Dolores, we focus heavily upon the work that she did at Hug, which was extremely important and which she carried into the community in her counseling role. And we recognize the way, I believe, in which she contributed to that school for 34 years and the manner in which she not only assisted, but the manner in which she really made the children that she counseled feel as if they were significant. And she did that not only in the school setting, but also in her home and in the community. The times that I would go to her house, I would see very frequently kids who were just kind of hanging out there because she was the person who made them feel like they mattered. And it wasn't just that she made them feel that way, she knew that they mattered. And she carried that message to them individually and to the school. But I think also it's important to recognize that she had a very important statewide and national influence. The NAACP here in the 1960s and '70s was fledgling. It was small. And it was very active and very vocal, especially in the areas of housing and education discrimination. And Dolores Feimster, along with other members of the NAACP, interacted in a very powerful way at the national and the state level. And she was recognized for that. So, I think it's important for us not to see her only in her role as counselor and as an educator, which was extremely important, but to also recognize that she had a very wide influence in this state. And another thing I wanted to mention was I am... And just recently retired, two years retired, from the University of Nevada as a sociology professor. I developed the Gender, Race, and Identity Program there. And I have a question, as I attended last time and this time. And it is, I wonder if we were talking about two men here, would we be talking about bifurcating? Would we be talking about combining in some way? Or would we recognize each of those individuals as significant for what they did and for what contribution they made? I think that's important for us to keep in mind. There's a gender, a race issue here, as well as a class issue. And these are important things for the School Board and for the community to comprehend. So, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. And thank you for serving as an educator. We appreciate that.
George Hardaway.
Welcome, Mr. Hardaway. Glad you made it on time. Perfect. Perfect timing.
Thank you. It's tough being in all these places at one time when you're committed to the community and so forth and so on. So, yeah, I'm trying to stretch it out as best I can. Good afternoon. Board. This is President Holland and Interim Superintendent McNeil. I just want to say a few words on behalf of Mrs. Feimster and the Feimster family. I came here in 1968 as a student athlete in university. And one of the first individuals to welcome me into her home was Mrs. Feimster. I sought refuge there because of what I experienced in the community, tremendous racism. I thought I had landed on another planet when I entered this community. And I was yearning to get back home. But I stayed here because of the fact that this lady took me under her wings and said, "We will protect you. We will help you. We will support you in what you are trying to do in this community." I want you to know that I worked with Mrs. Feimster at Hug High School for a number of years. I tell you, she made a tremendous impact on our students. I worked in the Social Studies Department. I was a history teacher. And I tell you, when kids would come to me, I would send them to Mrs. Feimster, and she would take care of them. I want you to know that she made a tremendous impact in northeast Reno. She was totally... She was totally immersed in the community, doing great things. I don't see a connection between Debbie Smith, who I worked with at the state and local level. I don't see a connection with Northeast Reno and Debbie Smith. I really don't. I'm here to say that Mrs. Feimster's legacy will go on in Northeast Reno. Historically, I'm telling you, her impact will last forever. And I am here to let you know that as a citizen of Sparks, I just want you all to realize that this lady is worthy of having this school, which is right up Sutro, left in her name. We hope that that will prevail. I want you to also know that when it comes to Montello, 10th Street, Sutro, she was all over the neighborhood doing things for not only students, but family, family. And her relationship will last forever. I tell you, great lady. Now, I want you to know one thing. I will definitely remember this lady in my memoirs.
You need to finish up.
I'm writing her up in my memoirs. She will be in my memoirs. I know that for a fact.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. And thank you for your service to our students as well. We appreciate it.
God said, "Your purpose in life is in Reno, Nevada. Stay here." And I sacrificed all my time back on the East Coast in Hartford, Connecticut, to be here over 50-plus years. And I'm still here because I have five grandkids in this county.
We thank you.
In Washoe County. So that's what it's all about.
We thank you.
It's from the heart, you know? It's about the heart.
Absolutely. And it is for all of us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you, JJ. Okay, trustees. So again, this is, this was the direction, the vote of the board at our last meeting was to refer the naming back to the school naming committee. And I do want to clarify for folks that as this board at the November 12 meeting struggled with problem-solving and brainstorming, we did throw out suggestions that were sometimes terrible suggestions and sometimes good suggestions, but there was never any intent by anyone to discredit or dishonor anyone. I think our struggle has been to appropriately honor two very, very heroic and important women, impactful women in our community in an honorable way with the tools that we have and with the opportunities that we have before us. We have had schools named during this journey for this board and we now have this one opportunity before us. There will be an elementary school in Cold Springs coming up. There will be other schools in the future, but they may be far down the road. So we're struggling with how to do this. So I would, I would just offer to my fellow trustees, my colleagues, any comments anyone would like to make or any thoughts or suggestions that you can share. Student trustee Noble.
All right. So what is very, very apparent from all the public comment and all that I've heard about Dolores Feimster and Debbie Smith is that they were both extraordinary women, both remarkable in their own right, and they both lived for their students, students of this district. Michael Lansbury died for his students. Since the last meeting, I've had, or yes, two meetings ago, I had the opportunity to go into my population and discuss with various students and student councils how they felt about this issue. While none of these people are unworthy, while each of them merits a school and probably more, Mr. Lansbury, he made the ultimate sacrifice for his students. That is true heroism. That is true, an extraordinary sacrifice on the part of a teacher. Both Ms. Smith and Ms. Feimster also made extraordinary sacrifices. But when I hear what's being discussed, it is between Debbie Smith and Dolores Feimster. And the impression that I do get is that to a small degree, Mr. Lansbury has been thrown out of consideration. Now, I do acknowledge there will be future opportunities, but at the same time, we really shouldn't forget the contributions that Michael Lansbury made because, well, he died for his students. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Nathan. And I don't know, Irene, if you want to share anything. We have had communication from folks that are involved with the Lansbury name recommendation that it's still too fresh for people. And Irene, if you want to comment.
For the record, I'm in pain. So, gosh, a couple of school, school naming, you know, ago, Mr. Lansbury was considered, he was in the top three. And we did some research. We reached out to the family because the family have, and there's no criticism intended here, have not advocated, actively advocated for a name, for a school to be named after Mr. Lansbury. So we reached out to the family. And previously, they'd, they'd felt it was a little too soon, a little fresh for them. But they said that if it was the will of the naming committee, they could abide by that. We then reached out to students and families who were at the school involved. And the feeling is from a staff perspective that it's still very raw, still a little too soon for them. Now, I'm quite sure we could talk to 100 people and we would get different opinions and, you know, different majority feelings. But when we did this, it was about a year and a half ago, two years ago, there was a definite feeling from staff and from some students that they felt it was too soon. It was still really raw and fresh for them.
So there's no, no desire to dishonor anyone who's in this process. And the folks who have been brought forward by the naming committee are all extremely deserving people. And we do want to be respectful of the feelings of folks who have expressed feeling traumatized by just the process of having to come and, you know, make comment and stand up for a particular name or to, to have that name be on the wall, having experienced. And many of those folks that Irene is talking about were actually present and witnessed that terrible event that, when Mr. Lansbury died. So Nathan, that, I hope that shares some of the background of why it narrowed down to these, these two people. And again, no dishonor to anyone. And any of the names who make it to the finals will also be included in future naming opportunities automatically. So that name will move forward no matter what happens. Okay, other comments? Trustee Kelly? And thank you. I'm glad you were able to join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam President. And I was listening to the student artwork presentation from my car.
Oh, good.
And I wish I could have been here, but it sounded like it was great. For the naming, I mean, my opinion hasn't changed from the last meeting. I still feel the same way for this meeting that I shy away from combining Feimster-Smith or Smith-Feimster. I just, I don't, I think both women have earned the right through their legacy and their histories to have their own school name after them. And I still feel that Dolores Feimster, because of her, her personal connection to Hug High School, her personal connection to that surrounding neighborhood, I still feel that the new CTE Academy at the current Hug High School building should still be named after Dolores Feimster. And I still feel that Debbie Smith, because of her work with WC-1, that a future new school should be named after her. But I also recognize that Debbie Smith was, was a very big proponent of career technical. So I'm still, I would still be open to the current AACT building being named after her. And I've had a chance to talk to some students about that during some visits that I've done at AACT in the last couple of weeks. But I still feel that a future school named after Debbie Smith would be very appropriate because of what she did for WC-1.
Okay. And again, just to clarify, we won't be making the decision tonight on what the CTE school is, but it is important to hear what trustees feel. I too, and, you know, again, in the brainstorming process of how we can resolve this, had put forth the Feimster-Smith or Smith-Feimster, and I think that should be off the table. Even though some folks were enthusiastic at the moment when that brainstorm popped out of my head, I think we should just take that off the table because it's just not enough of recognition for either of them. So that would be one thing I'd like to do tonight and take that out of consideration for the committee. Trustee Minetto?
Did we? Sorry.
You're not, you're not on. You're not, mic's not on. Oh, it is? Okay.
I thought we kind of said that we're going to do some, looking at AACT and, I'm short now, and asking, you know, them and their community and their students and the parents and the alumni and, you know, what they thought of the possibility.
We wanted to have this meeting. We wanted to get direction from you. But for sure, if AACT, renaming AACT is a potential option, we, before we would have those discussions, we will absolutely reach out to the school community. And the school community means staff, parents and students. We will absolutely garner that input and, and, and that will shape whether, you know, it's, it's a viable option.
And I just would add to that, and I know it was Vice President Raymond's suggestion in the brainstorming, yep, that if there's a way to preserve AACT such that it's the Smith Academy of Arts Careers in Technology, so that it still preserves, that would be certainly valuable to me. Vice President Raymond.
I guess more procedural in regards to this agenda item, the way it's written, we can give guidance to the naming committee. Do we have the option of just asking that, and I'm not advocating, I'm just wondering, to just have it come back to us for a vote without it going back to the naming committee? Or do, do we have to send it to the naming committee before?
Well, we can vote not to do that, but that is the, that is the action that's before us and that was what the board voted for this agenda item to be. But, and counsel, I, you know, certainly, yeah, let you weigh in.
I think, let me answer two kind of questions that were out there with regard to Allen's is, we have to take this action today before we could have looked into anything else. So just, and then with regard to that, if you were to vote no today, the item stays here at the board because that's where it was at. It was already referred here by the school naming committee. So what it would come back as is the exact same, basically you've erased what was done in November. You would be saying, "We've decided not to do this." And it would come back to you as a referral from the naming committee from October, I guess it was, or September, the way it was.
Okay. And I'm not, again, I'm, I'm thinking about it because, you know, I think there was so much emotion that night in November. And I don't, I still feel like it was the right decision to move forward the way we did. And I recognize how that has been painful in a way to the families. But, you know, I think I'm still comfortable with that decision because I would not have wanted to rush through a decision that night that I didn't feel comfortable with. And so I'm, I'm still okay with it. But kind of having now had the time, I'm just wondering what comes out of the naming committee, I guess, reviewing all of this again? I know we talked a little bit about how they hadn't had the opportunity to brainstorm, they didn't realize they had the opportunity to brainstorm other ideas. So I guess that would be one positive that comes out of it. And then would it, were you saying that it would also go through kind of the same process where there would be public, you know, surveys and kind of feedback on that?
I'm in pain for the record. So you're absolutely right. The, the naming procedure or process is that we reach out to the community, we get input from the community, and that starts the, the process of consideration and a shortlisting. So by going back to the naming committee with a broader brief so that they can consider other options, it does give them that opportunity to do that. Whether they will, I mean, they, they went through a comprehensive process to get to the three finalists that were recommended to you. Now, who can predict how those conversations or how that conversation will go in terms of, will they add any new names? Now that they can look at a broader spectrum of options, would they decide to put any of those forward to you or would they remain with their three recommendations? I mean, I really don't know. What I would say is that for sure, before moving forward, before that meeting in February of the naming committee, we will want to make sure that the school community is okay to have their name be considered. So we would certainly do that.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm still leaning towards having the naming committee go through this. And I, I do agree. I think that the dual name not being part of their consideration is probably a good idea. I think, I think it's worth the inquiry into adding Smith to AACT. And I think for me personally, it is important to find a way at this time to honor both of them if at all possible. And that's not in any way to diminish the importance of either of them. It is strictly because I feel so strongly that I want to honor both of them. And so I would like to be able to, to find a solution to that. I recognize and, and would state now that if it, and when it does come back to us, if there is not a way to honor both of them, then at that point, we have to make a decision and pick something. And if it only is recognizing one or the other, then at that time, that's the place that we're in. But I think it's a worthwhile, you know, as we talked about it the last time, there's not as big of a time crunch to come up with the name, although I don't want to drag it out for anyone involved. I want to make sure that we've looked at our options and are doing the right thing for, you know, this time. So that's where I'm leaning.
And trustee Cottrell, I'll get to you in just a second, but counsel wants to correct something.
Yeah. Just to build off of what Irene said, I think when you send it back to the board, you can really only consider the names that are listed here. And I think because you're the ultimate decider, you can tell the naming committee, "We don't want you going to consider other names. We want you to only consider Feimster or Dolores Feimster or Debbie Smith." And I actually think the way this is written, you could even say, "We only want to consider these school sites," whatever they are, you know? So I, I think, I think, I think you can be more direct because I don't know what the best way to put this is. I guess is you're the superior board, if you will. I don't mean to make that sound.
Authority.
Ugly, yeah. Higher authority than the other boards. So, so you can direct them on what to consider and then come back with a recommendation consistent there, too. And that's consistent with the policy and the regulations related to naming because you're the ultimate decider.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Cottrell and then Dr. Taylor.
Yeah, thank you. So having some time to think about this, I do think that any kind of a hyphenated name might not be the best. In thinking about this, unless we, the district is able to share with the naming committee the thoughts of AACT on their name by February 5th, I don't know what will happen on the 5th. 5th that hasn't already happened. I think it's good to, to do our due diligence, but I just want to make sure that we're not essentially making them go through a process that they've already, they've already done. But if we can get some information on AACT by then, that might make them feel real good about their recommendation and our decision. One thing that I would caution against is that if we're gonna, if we're gonna include the Cold Springs site, we have to go back and start over and get the input of Cold Springs, because I don't, they didn't take part in this because they weren't expecting to be a part of this process. They were waiting for the next time. So, if we are gonna include that school, that's fine, but we have to then be prepared to take this through a much longer process. Because they, we don't want to blindside them with, by the way, here's what your school's going to be named, and that community says, well, wait a minute, we didn't know this was happening. So, we just have to decide how we want to do this. If we want to limit it to just the current HUG site and AACT, hopefully we can have that done February 5th, write to us, and then be done. But if we're gonna include Cold Springs, this is gonna be a much longer process that's gonna go further into spring, and we just gotta be prepared to do that. And I'm, I don't know if we really want it to go that long.
If I could respond to that, our plan will be to solicit input from the AACT family, the school family, before that meeting in February. We want to move on that as quickly as possible so that we do have that information so that that can be considered. And in terms of Cold Springs School, we really, because of the construction schedule and wanting to get a name and having a name when we break ground, we really do want to include that on that agenda for the naming committee. But you're absolutely right. We have to reach out, we have to open that naming process, just that standard process, because that community have to play a role in naming their school. So, we're, we're kind of looking at them as two separate agenda items, and the Cold Springs will follow the process, and that is involving that community and actually involving the Hualashaw County communities.
Okay, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just going to, to share my thinking on this, and, and this will echo some of the things that have been said. In the time between the last meeting and this meeting, I'm gonna absolutely agree, I don't think a new, a dual name sufficiently honors the women that we're discussing. I would also like to say, and I think General Counsel mentioned this, our intention, as I recall from the last meeting that we had, was to only ask the naming committee in their considerations was to, to restrict that to Dolores Feimster and Debbie Smith. And so, other names would not be, we even at that point, as I recall, at least in our discussion, because it was a request of the family, that the, that it's Dolores Feimster, not Feimster. And I think that's, that's reflected in the, in the agenda item as well. I do think it's important to do our due diligence to know what those options are before us without it going, you know, way down, down the line. And I'm glad, I was gonna make the recommendation, so I'm glad you said that, and then you mentioned it as well. I'm glad you said that, Irene, and trustee Cottrell did as well, that it gives us time because the naming committee doesn't meet until February, it provides that time to get the input from the AACT community, because they too, you know, deserve an opportunity to weigh in. And my comment going to Cold Springs was, was in line as well, is that, that is certainly, in my opinion, a separate process. They can be considered at, you know, the same meeting because we have to move forward, but they deserve the same full process as every other school site has had in terms of what name should be appropriate for them. So, I, I do think that as we look at, at the, the motion, I would, I would remove the Feimster name, and I would also remove the, or combination of the names from the motion. And if it's in line, I would like to make that motion at this time, Madam President.
It's certainly in line. I don't know if the board wants to wait and include other, other actions in the motion, just up to you all. We can have, we can have multiple motions, so. Yeah, if you want to go ahead.
My thinking would be, and I don't know if it should be in this, counsel, I'll look to you, in, in terms of timing around getting the feedback from the AACT community, because I do think it's really important for that to happen before this goes back to the naming committee. So, would it be appropriate to include that in this, or should that be a separate motion?
I think it's fine. I think you can include her in one motion.
I, I think I'm hearing that being the pleasure of the board, and I know it's certainly the intention of staff, but it's, you know, it's always nice to have a motion behind it. Looks like there's public comments.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll wait on a motion. I also want to, to just offer an opportunity for us, are there any other things that you want to ask the naming committee to, to consider? Because again, we, we had talked about giving them the opportunity to have flexibility. The naming options on the slide before this, JJ? Nope, four, yeah, there we go. Nope, oh, there. Existing buildings named after either Dolores Feimster or Debbie Smith, segments of new school named after either Dolores Feimster or Debbie Smith, future buildings named after either Dolores Feimster or Debbie Smith. So, if there's anything else more specific among those things, and I think, I think perhaps in addition to removing the combination of names as an action, because I, I do think we're all in agreement on that, and getting input about other options before the February meeting, we might want to include those things in there, if it's the will of the board. We might want to include those three things, existing buildings, segments, or future buildings, as options for the naming committee to consider, just a thought. Trustee Kelly, and then we'll have public comment.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I kind of look at segments as the same thing as combining names, because I kind of feel like Debbie Smith or Dolores Feimster shouldn't have part of a school named after them. So, I would almost ask, maybe we take out that segments of new schools named after them.
That's, that's why we're having the discussion. Yeah, thank you. Vice President Raymond.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, and it was my understanding that the naming committee can't actually do that part. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, we were having, JJ was giving me, was, the naming committee can, you're talking about segments of buildings?
Yeah, like can they, the naming committee isn't the one that would recommend a gymnasium or a.
Right, that's correct.
Field, that's a board, that was a different policy, I kind of remember.
It's a different policy and regulation. It's actually a different regulation, I believe.
So, they can't even make that as a recommendation, because they don't make the decision anyway? We do.
Right.
Not that I favor it, I just want to be clear about that. I just want to be clear.
It would be inconsistent for them to make that type of recommendation.
Okay, okay.
If I recall correctly on the reg, I didn't expect to be asked that, but the last time I read it, if I recall, it comes from the community itself, meaning the principal would say, we would like to name this field after our former football.
Or the counseling center, or the, yeah, okay, okay, a career center, whatever. Okay, okay. Okay, so, let's have public comment, JJ? Didn't you have, oh, I thought someone gave you a public comment, okay.
We already took public comment on this item.
Oh, okay, we're not opening it again?
Well, well, that's at your discretion, but we have already taken it on this item, so it's up to the chair.
But I think a gentleman arrived that had not been able to be here when we took public comment. I, I would certainly like to hear from him.
It's up to you, you're the chair.
Tammy Burke.
So, I was just, I was told, yeah, that public comment was done, so I was gonna do it during the general public comment. I'll bring up the same concern that I brought up last time, and that has to do with adding or changing AACT's name. My child is an alumni from AACT, and I reached out to her that night and said, what do you think? And several of her friends have also responded to her in the last couple of weeks since then. And I think you need to be very careful and reach out to those alumni. All of her friends said, no way. And, and again, my child in particular knows the importance of how I personally feel about Debbie Smith, working with her through PTA and legislative stuff. But, I don't know how you're gonna accomplish doing that between now and February 4th and getting an accurate response from AACT alumni and current kids with winter break. You've got a pretty limited time there.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, is there anybody else that wants to address us on this item before we move into a motion? Okay, Vice President Raymond.
Can I clarify something really quick before you do that?
Oh, yes.
That's okay. So, just with the future buildings, I know there was some discussion at a previous meeting about, or at the last meeting about a future high school, saving one of the names for the future high school. So, and I did get a little bit of information about timing. I mean, we're looking at seven to 10 years really for the next high school, which of course is growth dependent. So, I guess I would just ask to keep that in the back of your mind. I'm not sure, I, I don't know what the policy is actually, and maybe, maybe Neil does, about whether or not the committee could even make a recommendation for a future, for a future high school that's not built yet.
Or even considered, yeah.
Right.
So, it's kind of, it is a little difficult, because how the policy reads is that you get to decide on future schools, but then their reg is a little more specific, and it gets to a point where Pete's folks decide that this is in development, it's time to bring it to the naming committee. So, we don't really have anything like that in the hopper, but then again, reg can't overrule policy, so there is an argument that the policy could, you could just say, well, we're reading the policy this way. It wouldn't be an appropriate reading of it. So, is it the best thing? Again, it goes back to how far down the line do you want to go? Do you want people changing, you know, do you want to give the people who get elected at their time the opportunity to make their decisions, as you all discussed last time? So, that's, it's really, it's legal, but I think you want to be careful.
Okay, Vice President Raymond.
Yeah, I might, I was just going to suggest that Dr. Taylor's motion tonight not include future buildings, just because I don't feel comfortable tasking the committee with trying to look ahead that far. And the way that our process works anyways, that if the, a name isn't chosen, it rolls into the pool anyways, and so I just don't think that's worth a lot of their energy and focus at this time. I think, to me, it really is between either the existing HUG, future CTE school, having one of those names or the other, and/or including AACT in that. To me, that I don't see the need to ask them to look at a lot of other options. I don't want to limit them if there was something that we totally missed, but I do feel like we've talked about this a lot, and I don't know that I see any other options than those two possible, possibilities.
Nathan?
So, I'm just spitballing here, but since these are both two very deserving people, and we don't want to hyphenate or name sections of buildings, really is between naming the full school after one or the other, would it be possible to leave the decision to the community, put up a poll or something for a limited timeframe in which members of the public could vote on which would be the best name, and then abide by the public's decision? Just spitballing, of course.
That's, that's certainly an approach we could take. I, I want to caution that a poll is not necessarily a statistically representative sample, and it's not an election. And so, it, it is, it's absolutely informative, and it does help us to understand how the people who responded felt about it. I'm just, sometimes I worry that letting a, a non-scientific, non-statistically representative sample of folks make a decision puts a lot of burden on advocates to go, you know, drum up support and have to go out there and, you know, get your people on, online to, you know, submit a survey. I do think it's great to get the input, and I hope that we will get lots of input for this. So, it sounds like we're narrowing this down. Trustee Cottrell?
Yeah, in thinking about this, I, I would recommend that whatever we do, we don't set any unnecessary precedent that every time there's a, it's really close with two deserving names or three deserving names, we essentially then name future schools, and before you know it, the next eight schools already have been named. And not, not that it takes away from trustees, I think it also takes away from the naming committee. People want to serve on that committee to help name schools that are being built, and that committee's gonna lose a lot of steam if we've named the next 10 schools because we just aren't gonna make a decision. So, to me, it sounds like it comes down to if the community at AACT is open to it or not, and then we just make a decision on this school. And then, when the next school comes along, we do the process again. And so, it just seems like that's really our, our only options, other, so we don't set dangerous precedents for, for future schools.
Well said, trustee Cottrell. Okay, I think we're ready now for a motion, Dr. Taylor, if you're still willing.
See my motion? Okay. Okay, Madam President, I move that the board of trustees directs staff to work with the school naming committee regarding discussed, discussed options to be considered for naming the CTE, the Career Technical Education Campus located at the current Proctor HUG High School. In addition to reaching out to the AACT community on options that may include that school and that the new AACT academy be named, that the recommendation, that they consider either Dolores Feimster or Debbie Smith, limiting those considerations to existing buildings.
And, and removing the option of a combination of those names?
Yeah, I'm just not gonna say that. That's just not gonna be part of my, yeah.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, does that?
And that this be conducted before, that that information be included before the naming committee, before this goes before the naming committee.
Good, okay. And that information is the outreach?
The outreach, yes.
Okay, all right, is there a second? Oh, second by trustee Cottrell. Is there further discussion? I think this was very helpful, I think the discussion was good, clarifying what's, you know, what's on everyone's minds, and some good thoughts about how we can limit this, so appreciate that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, folks, thank you for being here to help us navigate a very difficult decision. I'm going to, thank you Irene, and thank you Sam. I'm going to suggest that we take a break. I know that's hard for you to believe, Dr. Taylor, but I am going to suggest that we take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back, starting with item 5.05. All right, we will bring our meeting back to order, and I wanted to note that trustee Kelly had to leave because his son is in a play tonight, and he actually has speaking parts. Yes, he is not a tree, he is, he has speaking, he has, he has lines, and, okay, I've, I've lost control. The, the next item in our, on our agenda is presentation discussion and possible action regarding items presented and discussed by the Capital Funding Protection Committee at their meeting of December 5th, 2019, and approve the following as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee, the WCSD 2019 Capital Improvement Program Annual Evaluation Report, and the WCSD Capital Improvement Program to include the 2019-20C Major Project Program in the amount of $3 million to include projects throughout the Washoe County School District pursuant to the attached list of program projects and associated costs for each project. And here to present are Pete Etcher, our Chief Operating Officer, and Mr. Adam Cersey, the guy who has a S on his chest, the Superman Chief Facilities Management Officer. You do kind of look like him, Adam, I'm sorry, it just hit me, Superman. It is a compliment. Doesn't he sort of look, doesn't he give you the, yeah, okay, now, now he's speechless. Okay, Mr. Cersey.
Well, actually, I'm gonna begin tonight, so Pete Etcher, Chief Operating Officer. And unfortunately, even with that, I have to unfortunately begin with some sad news. Our committee chair, Tim Rowe, has had to step down as our chair and as a member of the cap- the Capital Funding Protection Committee and also the Oversight Panel for School Facilities. Tim is also taking a leave of absence from his law practice, as he is currently putting all of his effort into battling a serious health issue.
Oh, gosh.
So, I know that you all join me in sending our thoughts and prayers to Tim and his family, and we definitely look forward to seeing him again, doing all the selfless acts he does for our community. He is absolutely one of those unsung community heroes. And we will work with our Vice Chair and our Board Services Group to fill this committee slot and his leadership position on this committee. Until then, our Vice Chair, Dave Solero, will be running the meetings.
All right, thank you, Pete, and as you said, please extend our, our concern and our support and encouragement to Tim and his family.
Will do. So, before Adam presents the presentation and action items, I want to touch on a couple of the informational items from that meeting. First, we had an informational item presented by our Chief Auditor, Kirk Starkey, regarding the status of the capital construction auditing services. There were two firms that submitted proposals to provide the work, and after reviewing the proposals, a representative from the Capital Funding Protection Committee, the Audit Committee, and Mr. Starkey agreed to move forward with a contract with Protiviti Consulting, a global firm with a specialty in this area. Internal Audit is currently coordinating the review and finalization of the contract. A budget amount of $100,000 was previously approved by you for these services, and hopefully this audit should be underway right after the holidays, and Mr. Starkey is available if you have any questions on this.
Okay, and we have been following that with great interest and very much appreciate the, the work of all the folks who have brought this in, so that's great, thank you. Any questions on that part? Okay, yeah, good.
All right, so second, we also provided a preliminary draft copy of the Washoe County School District 2020 to 2039 Facilities Plan to the Committee. We have also submitted a draft copy to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency for their initial comments. Now, based on the comments we received from both of those groups, we will finalize our facilities plan and bring it back to you for review and approval in January or February prior to making the final submittal to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and that will be done for conformance review with the, associated with the recently updated regional plan. So, that should be coming to you, I guess, around January, February. So, if there's no questions on that, I will turn this over to Adam to go through the presentation and action items.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Adam?
Okay, good evening, Adam Cersei, Chief Facilities Management Officer, for the record. We're going to start off, just to set the table, there's a number of slides here covering essentially three major, what were three items on the Capital Funding Protection Committee Agenda, concluding with a singular action item. So, these, this first one is referring to the Annual Evaluation Report, is a report that's required to be presented by the policy governing this committee, and I'm going to run through it with you briefly. Wanted to start the table with a description of the WCSD Data Gallery. You are all very familiar with this, but I, I continue to open with this frequently because it is a wealth of information to the public and specifically pertaining to buildings as well. So, if you drill onto that building, Buildings tab, you will see an interactive map, many of you have seen this before, where you can actually click on any of our existing school facilities and learn a whole bunch more about the condition and projects at those facilities. Specifically, again, drill in further and you can see the actual facility deficiencies. We talk often about FICUS or Facility Condition Index System, the assets that are in need of replacement or will be in need of replacement, the backlog costs of that work, as well as this screenshot illustrates a recent project that was completed at Sparks High School, the bids received on that to further illustrate the cost competitiveness, public nature of, of our capital work. All of this, again, available to the public through the WCSD Data Gallery on the Buildings tab. This is just further drilling down, I guess, into that FICUS database. This is all public information, the assets that we have, the cost of replacement, and their approximate age. So, I just, I think this is foundational to the school district's program and want to try and mention it at, at every opportunity.
And Adam, I just want to thank everyone that worked so hard to keep this maintained because this information is as impressive as anything that any public entity I know of offers on their website. So, thank you to everybody. Thanks to the people who put it in place originally, and thanks to the people who could keep it maintained, and all the work that it represents.
Thanks for that, I'm going to stop talking for a second. Most of you have probably seen this video, but I think it's tremendous and it sums up much of the work we did in 2019 very nicely.
What a world of difference this capital funding has made so far, and so much more to come. The flashy stuff is the new schools, and we'll show you those in a minute. We get to see the critical repair work, action taking place over summer, like roofing at Reed, single point of entry at, and HVAC work at Dodson, and so many other repairs that take place that you never see, all the stuff that happens behind the walls or on the roofs that is critical to our mission as educators. Since the ballot question passed in 2016, we've spent more than $100 million on these critical systems. For example, this has bought new boilers at Pine and Worcester. We've been able to do roof replacements at Galena, Reed, and Elmcrest. We've done those major HVAC upgrades at Gomes and Lenz. We've installed single point of entry systems at every elementary and middle school that did not yet have them, and this work is truly helping keep our students safe, warm, and dry. Beyond that, we've been able to improve and update lighting, heat, and water systems to not only make the classroom experience easier for students, but also save electric and water bills that come from the same pot of money used to pay teachers. Then, there's the new schools. We opened three of them this year, the first new buildings in a decade, Sky Ranch Middle School in Spanish Springs, Desert Skies Middle School in Sun Valley, and Nick Polakitis Elementary School in South Reno. These facilities are beautiful, energy efficient, cost effective, and were delivered on time and on budget. If you are at an elementary or middle school in the Northwest or Sparks, chances are you are seeing overcrowding relief from the cascading effects of opening the two new middle schools and our ability to move sixth grades up. If you're at an elementary or middle school south of Interstate 80, you will see those effects next year as Marcy Hers opens in South Reno. We are also on track to open John Bohatch Elementary School in Spanish Springs next year. As we look further into the future, we have a lot more exciting projects coming, including major investments in older schools. In the North Valleys, we just hosted a community meeting to discuss possible options for O'Brien. We are still in the planning process, but at this point, it looks like the sound, long-term investment is to build a brand-new school behind O'Brien, modern and larger than the current school, and then tear down the old school and rebuild the fields there. Likewise, we just held a community meeting to discuss the plans to expand and update Swope Middle School for another major investment in an older facility. We have a site ready to go and the construction contract about to come before the board for a new elementary school in Cold Springs. And the big one, we just broke ground on the new high school at Wild Creek. This is a more than $200 million investment that will take all of HUG High School students and be large enough to relieve overcrowding at other high schools, particularly Spanish Springs High School, our most overcrowded facility. Once the new high school is built and the students from HUG are moved, we will put a major investment into renovating and repurposing HUG High School into a career and technical education facility that will serve the whole district. That will give us so much in the way of additional educational options and will also further relieve overcrowding at the high school level across the district. High school rezoning will begin this fall as we look at addressing changes that stem from these elementary and middle school realignments. Please let your families know about washoeschools.net/map, which has the proposed and finalized future school zones searchable by address.
Well done.
So, it's been a busy year, thanks, JJ. So, that's the four-minute overview, I appreciate you watching that. We try and put a fair amount of detail into these annual reports. I'll summarize, really, the capital renewal portion of RCIP on this one slide. Detailed spreadsheets are attached to this agenda item that are based on the actual approved capital renewal programs from each of those years, with projects itemized and updated, dollars allocated to date, completion status, et cetera. But in summary, the 2018 Capital Renewal Program, as shown here, was essentially substantially complete. 2019 was the first year that we started to get into the energy conservation projects you may be familiar with, have come before the board multiple times. We're, we're completed with the Phase 1 of that, and then also, you can see the dollar amount started to increase, allowing us to do much more significant roofing projects at several of our schools. Also, I wanted to note a couple of deferred projects as we started to further develop our major projects at HUG, and O'Brien, for example, took deficiencies that were a part of those capital renewal programs and basically deferred them to the upcoming major projects. And then, the 2020 Capital Renewal Program, again, growing in size because of the need driven, approximately 50% complete, that was a big push to get our single points completed. Those were all completed at the elementary and middle school level by the start of 2019 school year. Continued increased investments in HVAC and roofing projects in particular, and now we're actually into the fiscal year 2020, Capital Renewal Program just started, the final Phase 3 of the energy projects are in that. Those, those will be completed early in 2020. So, that's a lot of information there buried in those attachments, but want to try and summarize it on one sheet here. The performance, so it's not only a lot of work, and these are, these are tricky projects, right? These are $50,000 jobs in an active school environment. This isn't out in some greenfield pasture where we're going to have a, a community in the future. So, these are challenging projects, we know that going in, we budget for some change during construction. We get a base bid, and then we include what we call a force account. It ranges based on the size of the project, the complexity of the project, variety of factors, but it's typically in the 5% to 15% range above that base bid, and we include that number in our budget and when we bring the contract before the school board. It allows us to, you know, execute those changes in a timely fashion, get that work done accordingly, but we track all of those changes, anything above the base bid of the contract. And really, what you see here in summary, based on all the construction contracts that were closed in this fiscal year, we ended the fiscal year at 4.13% above base bid. That's below industry average, it's a tick up from last year, but like I said, we typically have a 5% to 15% force account included. We're beating that across the board at just over 4%. Another attachment that was included with this staff report and presented to the Capital Funding Protection Committee includes all of these construction contracts, all the payments to them, basically the, the backup for that number. It's a voluminous report, it's now publicly available, all of our contracts in FY19 ending with only a, basically a 4% overage. So, that's the capital renewal portion of RCIP, and then the other side of it, you know, maybe the more, well, the, the higher budget one, are these major projects. So, we've developed this spreadsheet, this is the, the same list of projects, the same numbers that you'll see later in our item for action, and this is also the same list of projects that was on the 2016 ballot for WC1. It's very important to us to maintain that consistency, to illustrate that we're focusing on the projects that were approved by the voters, et cetera. The only difference between these numbers and the numbers that Pete will present later is that the capital renewal line item is, is not in this spreadsheet, right? Because we just talked about that. But I think most of you are familiar with these projects, I won't go through them in detail. You can see the allocation column, the budget that has been approved by this board, the total commitments, the actual contracts that we've executed against those budgets for those projects, and the remaining balance. By my count, six of those projects are substantially complete already. Obviously, three new schools, the addition to DeMond Ranch High School, long since substantially complete, and down there in the gray, the Nutrition Services Expansion, if you've had an opportunity to take a look at that facility, it's substantially complete at this time, and then that grounds building replacement, you may recall, we relocated it out of the flood zone recently, but tremendous progress, and you can see the, the Wild Creek Delta up to see significant commitment as we bid that work out, and we'll bring back construction contracts to the board very soon.
Adam, on the O'Brien expansion, that one shows only allocation of $500,000. Am I looking at the wrong line?
No, that's correct. I appreciate you highlighting that, the, as you may recall, that core school investments used to be a single line item, and as we've identified projects that fit that category, we've expanded and added those line items. The O'Brien project specifically, we've requested $500,000 basically for due diligence and preliminary planning only, in the, with the intent of ensuring that the major project is truly feasible. So, our intention is to return to the board likely in February, assuming the, the conclusions are favorable, and requesting a full design phase budget to move forward.
Okay, so those are allocation numbers will change as we authorize increases to the project budgets.
Absolutely. So, just to note, you know, total committed at the bottom on November 2018 was $213 million, that's $163 million in the last year of commitments. So, lot of, lot of positive work going on right there.
Wow.
So, again, in summary, very positive, significant projects on the capital renewal program side, and very, very pleased with the effectiveness that we've been able to deliver it. A hu, tremendous team working together with our schools, inside of our schools to make that happen, and really grateful for the ability to be able to put those kinds of dollars at our facility needs. As I just mentioned, tremendous major projects, three new schools opened in 2019 on time and under budget, that is a tremendous feat. And I wanted to kind of close with mention of the team that helped deliver this. We have an exceptional in-house team at the school district. We often talk about rising costs because of labor shortage, et cetera. We also have tremendous professional consultants that help us deliver these projects, and tremendous construction industry professionals that have really bent over backwards to bring this to fruition. You know, I'm incredibly pleased to be able to deliver what I feel is a very positive, successful report, that, that, you don't see the sweat. There's, there's a lot of Saturdays and, and late nights that make this happen, and there's a army of people behind Pete and I that, that make that happen. So, with that, kind of conclude this informational item, be happy to answer any questions you may have, or move into the next one, which is about Swope Middle School.
Any questions? Okay, and as always, our deepest thanks for this tremendous amount of very expert and professional work by everybody, our staff, our contractors, our subs, it's very, very impressive.
It's a pleasure to be a part of it, thank you. So, I'm going to continue on, this is an informational update regarding Swope Middle School expansion work. So, we've only come back to the board previously for some design phase allocation with some very preliminary conceptual information, not a detailed informational update. So, we're at a point where we wanted to try and give all of you an update on where we're at, all right? So, this is kind of the overview of the presentation, you can see the aerial view of Swope Middle Schools existing campus, and I'm going to dive into some detail about what our preliminary what our preliminary plans show right now. I mentioned the core school investments earlier. Again, this was a program, always intended to be a program of projects embedded in the WC1 list of projects, intended to address facility deficiencies or inequities at our existing core schools, however that wants to be defined. And Swope really rose to the surface because of its capacity, its inability to house all of its sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. There's five elementary schools that feed Swope Middle School currently, and the facility simply wouldn't house all of those sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. So we began a process of looking at relieving the overcrowding and providing some manner of facility upgrades to Swope. These are just photos of existing Swope Middle School. Starting off with this study, we looked, we did a detailed facility assessment. This included basically three primary categories of analysis, facility condition, you know, what is the, what is the facility's actual, literally says, what is the condition of the facility? What is the capacity of the facility relative to the demand? And then sort of an educational adequacy, like how closely does, do the existing spaces in the school match up with our modern, our current ed spec in our modern middle schools? And the qualitative conclusion was that this facility was favorable for expansion. It's a quality facility with many decades of life in it, that with the appropriate facility expansion could be brought up to standards, so to speak. So with that knowledge in hand, we move forward with feasibility study with Architects Plus to develop a concept to potentially expand this facility. So diving into a little bit more detail, as we've been developing this, as I mentioned earlier, we've come back and requested budget approval for the design phase, moved forward with the design contract with the architect. We've also solicited for and entered into a contract with United Construction for a construction manager at risk delivery method. This allows us to have the contractor at the table during the design phase with us to plan for some very complex construction in and on an active school campus. It's been very, very valuable to the design team. We've also engaged in some tremendous public outreach. We hosted a community meeting at Swope Middle School. Several of you were in attendance there, really trying to get word out to the school community, the adjacent neighborhood, solicit their input, incorporate some of their feedback into the design. Also, Neighborhood Advisory Board recently through the city of Reno, as well as the site plan review process required by the city also entails public notification of nearby residents.
Vice President Raymond has a question.
I just, thank you. I just wondered if you could provide some information on how the advisory board and the site plan review meetings went. I haven't heard anything about how those conversations went. Were you there?
No.
Tammy was there, wasn't she?
I could summarize what I was told in general. I will note there are a couple of, we'll call them off-site improvements. I think a new crosswalk on Keel and possibly some pedestrian flashers that were, spoke about, commented on, that are being incorporated into the project. Frankly, you're right. I wasn't there to get into too much detail. I think it was generally positive, you know? It's part of the process is communicating our intentions. If there are any red flags, we want to know about those, but by and large, it was very positive.
Okay. I think at the October 1st meeting, one thing that came up that felt like it might be an issue at the advisory board was the traffic on, is it Keel that's in front of the school? Yeah, on Keel for drop-off. And I thought, the point was made that by moving the buses to the back and that that drop-off would be actually less congested in front of the school, but I just didn't, I don't, I know always if the community is understanding that split and how that's going to work. So I don't know, maybe it's possible to have an update in the highlights or something on how the two kind of meetings went around Swope, or just an email to me would be fine, too.
I'll give you some better detail on that. I believe that the intent is that the bus drop-off is going to remain in the front. I think that's gone back and forth a series of times. But I want to get you some more context about how we've arrived at that. The site plan review is still in process. I understand they're mail out notices to nearby residents, and then that also triggers a Neighborhood Advisory Board, so that's likely going to occur in January. Makes the project better. You know, by and large, the community's in support of this. We want to hear their concerns and do everything that we can to incorporate scope to address it. So, run you through the scope of the project. In conjunction with the construction manager, we're moving down a path to recommend delivering this construction scope in three separate construction contracts. So I'm going to break them down a little bit by phase. Phase One here mostly pertains to a new sprinkler system inside the existing classroom spaces. The building was constructed before sprinklers were required. Now they are. This is very impactful to the classroom space, so it's something that we need to try to do during summer. Also, we'll be, we'll be doing most of the utility work, so there's some, you know, water and storm drain pipe trenching that needs to be done on the outdoor playground area, and then, of course, resurfacing the playground area. All those areas, basically highlighted in blue, are proposed to be completed summer 2020. Get that work done while the school is essentially vacant, and so that they can come back fall 2020 and go back into their existing classrooms. That'd be Phase One potentially. And Phase Two will begin roughly at the same period of time, but will continue on into the 2020-2021 school year, and it primarily consists of the construction of a new gym. So we are essentially, we are literally replacing the existing gym with a new, larger gym in order to, and then we're going to replace the old gym with classrooms. Before we can replace the old gym, we need to build them a new one. So we're going to be building a new gym on that footprint area in yellow that you see nearest the outdoor ball fields, and also doing some significant work to the kitchen. All the while, very carefully conducting that work in a manner that not only is safe, but does not negatively affect the academic environment that's taking place inside of those classrooms. So it's a balancing act. I want to also add kudos to the site staff, specifically Principal Nakashima has been very engaged with the design team every week, participating in those meetings and having a community with his staff and his families about what to expect, and of course, informing the team. So once the new gym is constructed, the intent is to demolish the old gym in sort of the center of this image. Apologize, I don't have a pointer if you can read this aerial image, but to reconstruct in its place a two-story classroom wing, essentially adding a dozen new classrooms and miscellaneous spaces to that school, all in accordance with the upgraded, the current ed spec. So there's some, there's, the Phase Three is when we'll complete a variety of other elements, new fire lane access required by the city of Reno, some interior courtyard improvements that'll really make those spaces valuable to that school and used hopefully in a variety of ways. And then some upgrades to the admin spaces, the front, the single, you know, front entrance, the finishing off the kitchen multipurpose room, and then some of those off-site improvements that I mentioned earlier, replacement of some sidewalk, upgraded pedestrian crossings, things of that nature. So three phases, really quick breakdown. And here is a very early representative of what it may look like. This is facing the front of the building. You can see an upgraded front entrance prominently announcing the main door. And then you can see, as you move through, you can see the two existing wings on either side largely will remain the same. Then going through the center where the gym is now, you can see what will be a two-story classroom space. And then the new gym on the back, this is to the west, the rear of the school. So that's, looking at it from the front, and then this is just rotated 180 degrees. You can see what it might look like coming in from the playfields into the new gym area.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Adam, will anything, are you planning any kind of upgrades, I guess if you will, to the existing wings and buildings that are there that won't be the two-story?
So I mentioned the kitchen, multipurpose room, administrative spaces. There are a couple of others.
I'm talking about the classrooms for the most part.
So by and large, back to that initial study, the classroom square footage is by and large equivalent to our current middle school ed spec. So the classrooms are well-sized. We're looking for cost-effective opportunities, I guess, to upgrade those spaces, whether it be with flexible furniture or technology that likely the other spaces will receive as they're new and built out. But again, in the interest of cost-effectiveness, can we add value to those spaces in a, in a cost-effective way where the approximately 900 square feet is kind of the standard threshold that exists? Right? So by and large, those classrooms are right where we want them to be, and we're just looking for cost-effective ways to possibly add value to them. By and large, minimal impacts to the existing classrooms.
Just for a follow-up, if I may, because I think what you said is where my question really came from, is, you know, we have, so you have the brand-new two-story building in the middle, and they have the latest technology and so on, and you don't want it to feel, I wouldn't want it to say, to feel so different to those students who are in those classrooms that are, you know, well, not, maybe not this way, but on the sides as much, you know? So things are, I mean, certainly we want to be cost-effective, but in particular areas of technology, tools that, you know, and tools that the, that the teachers would have, you know, in terms of whatever a smart board version is three years from now, those kinds of things. I just, I would, I don't want to leave the other parts of it behind, if you will.
Absolutely agree and appreciate your point there. The knocking down of walls and
Yeah, no, I don't mean anything like that as much.
That's something that's not necessary. So I think there's a tremendous interest on the part of everyone involved in making this feel like a cohesive, single building, not an old building with a new wing added on.
Look, functionality, those types of things are really...
Yeah, outfitting some new furniture where it adds value, and then likely technology will be the, the primary aspect of how the new classrooms are integrated, or the old classrooms are integrated with the new classrooms.
Vice President Raymond, and then Trustee Cottle.
Well, I totally agree, Dr. Taylor, and I'm glad to hear that, Adam, that there, you know, there won't be this sense of new versus old, and I hope that that is true. I think overwhelmingly, I feel like the feedback from the October 1st meeting was positive about this project, but the things that came up that did concern me was that expectation, I think, from the community, whether, you know, right or wrong, is that these projects, these core school projects are creating equity by making the core schools, you know, resemble the new schools that we're building. And I know there's no way to make, you know, the classrooms and the inside of Swope look like desert skies, but I think to walk into the building and see the, the kind of old carpet and the beat-up lockers and what we heard was a pretty inconsistent HVAC system in the old building, when, you know, none of that gets touched, and then there's a brand-new building, I do worry about, and it's a little bit about the students, but a lot about the staff and the teachers. If you get the new classroom in the new building and somebody else is in the old building, and it feels like they have, you know, air conditioning and heat that works and you don't, I mean, I'm, I think new furniture is great, but I, I don't want there to feel like this big disparity between the two. And I totally get the money part, that this is an expense, but I think we have to really look at how the money is being used to make the space feel like this investment is to make Swope, you know, and, and any other future site that we do this to, kind of at least close to the level of our new schools. So I encourage that to continue.
Trustee Cottle, and then Student Trustee Noble.
Thank you. So in this project, you're going to build the new gym. Then where the old gym is, are you knocking that down, or the skeleton's going to stay the same, or you're going to go in and kind of renovate and build your classrooms on the inside of the existing skeleton? Does that make sense?
Makes complete sense. It's an excellent question. The team actually analyzed both options carefully, and they are going to demolish the old gym completely and build back two-story classrooms.
So I know that the model's probably not exactly to scale, but in my mind, I'm envisioning, how are the, how is the equipment getting into the middle, do the work with the existing school there, plus the new gym's done? So everything around it is done except the middle. Like, how, how is that going to happen? And I'm thinking about, they're really close to the existing classrooms and noise, and how are we going to kind of get through that construction phase?
Landlocked by houses right around it.
It is a good question, and that's why we have the general contractor as a part of the design team. They've literally looked at conveyor belt solutions to get that, that construction material out from that center space. There's enough width, I want to say in the range of 12 to 15 feet between the existing classroom wing and the new gym space, so they will be able to drive trucks in and out of that space. But yeah, it's, it's a surgical maneuver to get that to, that classroom or that gym out of there. Absolutely, absolutely. And the noise in doing that. So the, the new gym's going to be in place, it's going to be in use, the existing classroom wings will obviously be in place and be in use. We're going to be in the middle of all of that, demolishing the gym and removing all of that debris, and then building back a new two-story classroom. They've definitely talked about basically like noise attenuating vertical blankets, or some sort of heavy acoustical material to separate that construction site from those classrooms. I'm not certain that they've arrived on an exact solution, but the, the academic environment, the sensitivity to the academic environment during construction, which will be occurring while, you know, during, during the daytime, while students are in the adjacent classrooms, is at the top of the design team's priority list. So again, working through it with the contractor at hand, with the principal in the room, we're going to arrive at an optimal solution.
Kind of a follow-up?
Yes.
Has it been talked about potentially staggering the work to where, let's say they're working from 2 to 10, and so the majority of the, the school day, there isn't anything happening, and as the students are essentially leaving, they go after it for essentially second shift almost. Has that been discussed?
It has, in a variety of ways, depending on the work, depending on whether or not it needs to occur entirely after school's out, you know, 2:00 PM on. And, you know, there's of course noise and work hour restrictions for the community. You know, generally 7:00 PM is, is going to be lights out regardless, but we will be working But we will be working after hours, like we do in all of our existing schools for these capital renewal projects, oftentimes, weekends, and of course, break periods. So strategically phasing that work, we're going to do this element of work during this time period, et cetera. Great questions, and all stuff that the design team is currently really digging into.
Nathan?
So you already addressed the first part of my question, which is how will this impact student body life on campus during construction? But the second part is how will it impact travel to and from the school, both by pedestrians and vehicles?
Impact, off-site impacts to construction should actually be pretty minimal. Obviously, there will be increased traffic related to the construction activities. That space, it's actually to the south, or if you're facing the school to the left. It's relatively available, relatively underutilized by the school currently. That's essentially going to be the construction staging area. So some of the materials that they need to be brought in and and used in that area shouldn't negatively impact the school. It's not fair to say that there won't be an impact. I mean, make no mistake, in the same way that this is not going to be a brand-new school, point very, very well taken, that efforts should be made to make this a cohesive finished product. This is an expanded and renovated Swope Middle School. There will be, there will be inconvenience associated with this project to the the people who live in and around that school during this time.
Okay. Keep going, if you would, Mr. Cersei.
Appreciate the feedback. This is a detailed schedule breakdown, won't go line by line, but I want to highlight some of those break periods where we're strategically identifying abatement work and other highly sensitive work that we want to target for gaps of time when the school will be vacant. But then, on a larger scale, highlight really summer 2020 through summer 2022, that active construction is anticipated on that school site essentially continuously.
Looking at that chart reminds me of a quote from my friend Toby Basta, who recently said, "You got to love construction, because if you don't love it, you're going to hate it." That is a very complex, tight set of timelines that have to be so well-coordinated among subs and school schedules and woof, man. Mr. Cottle?
So it'll take two years to complete this, start to finish construction?
That's right. That's that's absolutely the punchline of this slide, is that the intention is by August 2022, that the work will be substantially complete, and all of the sixth graders from those affected elementary schools can attend their sixth grade in 2022 in this school.
Yes, Vice President Raymond.
So another issue that came up on the, at the October meeting was the possible Calendar. Yeah, so I just, I know you are all on top of that, and Tammy was pushing that we, the information would be determined, it would be determined as soon as possible whether or not that those schools would be on, sorry, whether or not Swope would be on that calendar. So I just would encourage you to get that information out to the parents as soon as possible. And I, I think I've mentioned this, but my daughter starts seventh grade at Swope in August, or whenever it's the calendar, early August or middle of August 2021. So she is there through all the thick of this, which is, you know, I think, again, what what I heard from a lot of the people at the October meeting, and this is impacting, like, you know, every friend that I have in the district, pretty much, is their concern really isn't about their student, at this point, being, you know, in a construction zone day-to-day. I think it's that the academic, you know, level continue to improve at that school. You know, I know they're always striving to improve it. And so I feel like as long as we can ensure that, you know, the teachers can do the work they need to do, that the staff is, you know, I I recognize how disruptive this is going to be for everyone, but I also think that the the focus on kind of this in inside and the the school environment remaining high will reassure a lot of people about, you know, how how the parents will get through this with their students.
And I'll just quickly chime in. I I think that's why it's so important that the administrator, Principal Nakashima, be involved at this point in time, so that those plans could absolutely be put into place. Because we've heard those same concerns as well, as far as how is the academic environment going to be continuing through the construction period? And so I think having him involved in his team, along with Capital Projects and what those cap, those, you know, that timeline is going to be. I mean, a lot of this has to happen during breaks, but a lot of it is going to be happening during during the school time as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Let's keep going.
Okay, so this is, this is really the, an important slide as well. These are our current construction cost estimates for all all three phases, all construction scope, including, as you've seen previously, construction professional services and FFNE for the entire school. These are ranges, this is less than a 50% design. These are numbers that were developed by our general contractor. So wanted to try and set the stage that the next time we come to the board, likely in February, we will be presenting for recommendation a a construction budget to capital funding, and then the board to then potentially move into the bidding phase and have construction ready to begin summer 2020. So we'll wrap it up with that. Those are the estimated costs for construction. Of course, a fairly detailed overview of where we're at design-wise. I really appreciate the feedback, some great discussion, and hope we've reassured you that, you know, engagement with the community and the school is yielding some some really exciting developments for this school.
Great, great. Okay, anything else? Great, okay, thank you for that discussion. And that will be a very challenging project. And I know this board will support the team however we can and continue to help with the outreach and involving the community, because this is, yeah, this will be a big one. Okay, next up, Rio Wrangler.
Yeah, next up pertaining to the primary action item here, Rio Wrangler Area Elementary School. We're going to start off by looking at this slide. These are the current and projection, projected enrollments for our elementary schools in this area. As all of you now know, we've seen greater-than-anticipated enrollment at Nick Polakitis Elementary School. I note on the top line that two portable classroom units are being relocated for fall 2020. I like to phrase that as an appropriate use of a tool in our toolbox. While it is greater-than-anticipated enrollment, we can use those as temporary additional capacity and then remove them when they're no longer needed. In the meantime, you see on the bottom table the projected enrollments should this new Forest Elementary School in Southeast Reno open by the August 2022 school year, which would be the earliest that it could open at this point in time. But I mean, I think the takeaway here is that there's demand, there's existing overcrowding, and there's projected demand for an additional elementary school in this area. We've known this was coming for some time. We thought maybe it would be further into the future, but we've prepared for it. This site is currently owned by the school district. It's been acquired from Nevada Tri Partners, DeLoreto family. It's actually been master-planned into Dumont Ranch Master Plan Community. It's moved in multiple locations for multiple reasons. It's a long saga behind it. But right now, it's currently located there in that green area, backs onto the floodplain meadows. It's several hundred yards off of Rio Wrangler Parkway. You can see Dumont Ranch High School in that screenshot there. And then, of course, Brown is off the screen to the south, and Polakitis off the screen to the north. So we own the property currently, and we've been planning for this school for some time. This is a screenshot from last year's zoning advisory committee, where we actually preemptively rezoned a portion of the current Brown Elementary School into Marcy Hers. The board has made that action, so when Hers opens, those students will actually matriculate to middle school there. And then planning for this future elementary school. This, I mentioned, excellent bike and pedestrian accessibility. You're familiar with that community down there. There's, there's lots of asphalt paths and walkways along the drainage way that that interconnect, interconnect the community very nicely. This is a little bit of a zoomed-in image. You can see Rio Wrangler Parkway there on the left, basically, of the image. It's going to have two access points or roadways off of Rio Wrangler leading to the school site. There's residential, planned residential that's not built yet in between Rio Wrangler and the school site. If you look closely, you can see that that residential is gated and only has one access point off of each of those roadways. So green pasture and stepping stone drives, they're going to be called. It's not like there's just a series of driveways along those roads. They're just going to be 40-foot-wide roads with one driveway into that residential community. The rest of it is going to look like a driveway to our school. So I I like the way this is laid out. It's, those roads are actually wide enough to accommodate two lanes of traffic on each of them, as well as on-street parallel parking. So that's advantageous. They have sidewalks along them and then leading to our school. We're, we're very sensitive to that. This is technically a dead-end school site, which has been problematic for us in other areas in years past. So we tried to address that with this master planning. It is one bidirectional, both roadway. It's not like one is an in-road and one is an out-road. You can see there's some additional, it's an over-10-acre site. So there's some some space to basically turn around buses and then basically circulate through the campus. If you come in one road, if you wanted to turn around or drive out the opposite road, circulate through campus. So we've worked very closely with the civil engineer, the developer, DeLoreto, as well as our architects to master plan this. It's functioned well. As I said, we own the site currently outright. And as a part of the acquisition agreement, we actually shared costs with the developer for the site work and the utilities that need to be pulled, you know, constructed from Rio Wrangler back to our school site. So there's some shared off-site improvements that are a part of the land acquisition deal. That's already bought and paid for, so to speak. If you went out there today, I didn't have an opportunity to incorporate the updated images, but the site is basically ready to go. The developer's already done their masquerading. They're going to be pulling the utilities and building those roads, green pasture and stepping stone, over the next six months or so. And it will be ready for us to construct when when we see fit. So the action tonight really is just for the design phase. This is, I'm sorry, did you want to comment?
Well, no, I just see trustee Manetto has a question.
I just had a question. The, the corners of green pasture and stepping stones, are we going to have lights there? Are we going to have go-bouts, or do we know yet? Because if we've got the people living there and schools coming in and buses coming in, and these people have to get to work, it's going to be like one of those.
Great point. Actually, that was a comment that, some feedback we got from the Capital Funding Protection Committee as well. The short answer is we don't know yet. We will be doing a a traffic study, a detailed traffic study that will make recommendations. It's common anymore with our new schools to have some manner of off-site traffic calming component to the construction scope. So what that ends up being remains to be seen, but we'll certainly do a traffic study and be sensitive to pedestrian safety.
Adam, what about the floodplain?
So the floodplain is not impacted by this project. It is a part of all of the planning and approvals associated with the handbook itself, as well as the the map, the, for this village. They break it down into villages. So we won't be impacting it. There's no triggers with Army Corps of Engineers or with the city of Reno associated with us developing this property. There's drainage channels to the south, or not south, it's actually east, but the bottom of our school site, there's a large drainage conveyance channel that goes past the school site and then backing onto the meadows. I don't have the specific, you know, elevations, but basically, the engineering and master planning to accommodate this school site has already been done.
Okay, I, because you mentioned that it backed up to the, that meadow land, which is a wetlands area now, and I am familiar with that area. And I also know that we didn't get the flood control funding passed, and our project isn't, you know, isn't as far along as had hoped to be. And that area has had tremendous challenges in the last years. So I just want to make sure we're not going to end up with a Lemon Valley situation with the water coming up onto the playground.
I will just add, you know, I don't have an aerial here, but the the homes to the, on the upper side, the the top of this image and the southern, or the the lower side of this image are existing. The perimeter on the right-hand side is existing. That's a, you know, part of the design, flood mitigation design, that that meandering access path exists today. So we're all, we're, all of the school site and all of the work associated with it are outside of that perimeter, not impacting the wetlands at all.
Okey-dokey. Yes, Dr. Taylor. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the the information tonight, the the action for tonight is just for design phase funding in the amount of $3 million. The the next steps really, should this go forward, I mentioned that the pad and off-site improvements are being constructed by others. We'd look to bring back a design contract to the board in January to begin design. And I wanted to emphasize a a decision point that we will also have in August. There's always a thoughtful debate about when building new schools is truly appropriate and needed. We don't want to build them too soon, and now that we have funding, we don't want to wait unnecessarily. So we, we are setting ourselves up for an opportunity to evaluate what the enrollment numbers look like in August 2020 and make a more informed decision about whether or not it's truly necessary to move forward immediately with construction. We'll reevaluate that, bring it back to the board, and potentially move forward into construction. As I mentioned previously, should we move into construction at that time, the the school would be on pace to be opened by August 2022.
And then, in the meantime, the relief of overcrowding at Polakitis will come via the two mobiles, and you feel that'll be sufficient?
I do.
Pete, you're smiling.
It is a frustrating situation for all of us. We recognize that, and, you know, there's a lot of human element variables in play, so it's difficult to define, I guess. The nature of the school layout does seem to lend itself well to, functioning well at or near 100% capacity. There are some team rooms, some collaborative spaces that are being used to help alleviate some of that sense. Those two portable class, units come, you know, each of them are paired, so essentially four additional classrooms on a temporary basis.
But by '21, '22, it looks like the forecast is for 200 more students at Polakitis.
There's no doubt that this is a challenge that we're going to be monitoring closely. I will add, there was a discussion at Capital Funding Protection Committee about rezoning. I present frequently to the zoning advisory committee and basically express that I present frequently to the zoning advisory committee and basically express that zoning is not something that is, is desired to be done on a short-term basis. So while it may appear on the spreadsheet that there's some available capacity, that's problematic when we're talking about families and, and individuals. So we're looking at a variety of solutions between the work of the staff to, to make it work, you know, figure out how to schedule and to, to use the space that they have. And then our ability to augment it with those temporary classrooms, we feel that'll be effective.
Okay. Well, I know you all are looking at it and it's just amazing, the variables that go into the planning that you're doing. And I, I, I know I speak for the board that we have great confidence and great trust in you. It's a challenge that is going to take everybody's best thinking to resolve. Okay?
Okay, that's all the information I have on this one. I'm going to page ahead to the, the final slide and turn it back over to Pete.
The closer.
So last, exactly, start and close. So last slide, thank you for your patience on all of this. So this is the same spreadsheet you've seen numerous times and also the same projects and numbers you saw as part of the evaluation report. One thing I'll just kind of highlight a little bit on the far right where it says final expenditures, we added a few more projects. Now, they don't have check marks to them because there's still going to be some invoices just kind of trickling in at the end. But on the two middle schools, you can see that we're about $10 million under what the original budget amount was. So that money will be going back to be reallocated by the capital funding protection committee and ultimately coming back to you. The elementary school came on, came in just about right on budget. So there's only one or two, one action item that involves money tonight and then obviously the acceptance of the capital improvement program annual evaluation report. So the only action item is the $3 million for the Rio Wrangler design funding that Adam outlined.
Okay.
Concludes our presentation.
Do we have any public comment? We do not. Is there any other, are there any questions? Otherwise, we'd entertain a motion. Thank you, Vice President Raymond.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Washoe County School District Capital Improvement Plan to include the 2019-2020-C major project program and associated costs for each project in the amount of $3 million and the 2019 Capital Improvement Program Annual Evaluation Report as recommended and forwarded by the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. And second by trustee Manetto, is there other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you to the whole team. And now we have something to say to the parents in the Nick Pulakitas Elementary School that we're on it. We're on it. Okay, we're actually, before you sit down, Andrea, we're going to move up 5.0. Oh, you want to do that? Okay. Okay, Andrea's 506. Right? Yeah, okay. All right, we'll do 506. I, I, Dr. McNeil and I were conferring. All right. And this is a very, very important one. 5.06 is award of bid number 20-22-B10-D-A, construction of new Cold Springs area elementary school to Q&amp;D Construction LLC for $32,083. And I welcome Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Cersei is still at it. The floor is yours.
All right, good evening again. Adam Cersei for the record. I wanted to start off just rewinding a bit. This is an aerial of Cold Springs. As you may recall, this is the school site that we engaged with the public in literally a survey. We talked about that earlier. That's a, you know, a, a unique strategy, but it worked out very well for us in the sense that we had options, viable options, and we wanted to get the feedback from the community. And we received that in an overwhelming fashion for what on this exhibit is labeled as Site B. Bless you. This is a, a site that we have now acquired from Lifestyle Homes at a significant discount. I want to note that on the record, tremendous partnership with Bob Listener and Lifestyle Homes, not only in collaborating on this, but absolutely providing a significant discount in the acquisition process of this one. So that Site B is what we're going to be zooming in on here. Next, up there in the far northeast portion of Cold Springs, that area outlined in yellow is continued residential development and the area outlined in red is what the school district now owns and will be hopefully developing as an elementary school. And the reason we're doing that is because Nancy Gomes Elementary School is the most overcrowded elementary school in the school district. Those numbers are the numbers of students in Gomes K through 4. So that's, that's what the overcrowding looks like with fifth graders up in the middle school. Same with Silver Lake, also have their fifth graders up in the middle school. So we're going to be discussing this for information only on December 17th likely at the zoning advisory committee for the first time and then likely in January and February, taking those meetings and that conversation out to the community. But the need is undeniable and we're, we're really pleased to be able to bring this, this overcrowding relief to the community. So this is what the site actually looks like up there. It's also been masqueraded and is essentially shovel-ready. We're really pleased about the quality of the bid documents. We did our second one, Bow Hatch, before Pulakitas was finished. And as Pulakitas finished, as Bow Hatch started, as students and teachers live in Pulakitas, we were able to incorporate not only construction lessons learned, but a few, you know, operational lessons learned from being in those schools and, and really refine those bid documents to make them as high as quality as possible. As I mentioned, the, the grading and site work is ready and turning it over to Andrea to present what the results of the bid was.
Thanks. For the record, Andrea Sullivan, Director of Procurement and Contracts. So we were pleased to say that this bid did generate a lot of interest. We worked really hard between the two departments to generate as much interest as we could and buzz about this project as possible. This was our traditional, we call it design bid build or low bid. So this was not delivered through C Mar. This went out to bid. Low bid wins it. It's a comprehensive, single-construction contract, which is nice, so we're not doing multiple GMPs or phases now that we've done this a few times and we've got a good piece of property. It really lends itself more to this type of a contract. And then the furniture, fixtures and equipment will be provided by Washoe County School District. In fact, we just have those buy lists now and are working on, my department has them now and we're working now already on, on getting some of that stuff done.
Andrea, can I just interrupt for a second? Just for the public record, just some explanation about why C Mar is, is not the preferred approach here? And, and both of you can answer.
I, I mean, I think what's really important is we have to look at all the tools we have in the toolbox and pick the most appropriate method of delivery for each project. So for example, when we have a prototype school that we've never built before and we don't have these lessons learned, we don't have any experience under our belt, something like that may lend itself to AC Mar project where we have a lot of time constraints or we don't entirely know what the design will look like and we want more input. It may lend itself more to C Mar. You heard Adam talking about Swope and that's an active campus where we're really going to have to time everything perfectly and work with the design team and the construction team hand in hand to make sure that we can do it on an active campus. So it's a little more complex, complicated project. We feel like we've built this school a few times now. We have figured out these lessons learned. The particular piece of property is already pad-ready. So it's not as complicated as it was the first time we built it. So I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that.
The only other thing I would add, and that's an excellent explanation, is that while the majority of the scope is publicly advertised and competitively bid in a C Mar environment, the low bid, open-market competition does provide value in the sense of lower total cost to the school district. We have to weigh the risks of the complexity in a variety of elements, but in this instance, felt that the preferred delivery method for this project was design bid build.
Okay, I just appreciate having that explanation on the record so that folks can, can understand when we make those decisions, the reasons behind the decision.
We have very rich discussions in our building about what delivery method would be best for our project, both between capital projects and purchasing. We explore them all and really come to a decision on how to do it. And usually we agree on it too. We haven't had, you know, disagreements about that where it, it makes a lot of sense the way we've been doing it.
Good, good. Okay, proceed. Oh, and by the way, I did want to mention, I was out there when the grading was going on and I believe it was Aspen Earthworks that was doing the grading. And the guy that was running the water tanker, keeping the dust down, was so excited to talk to us because he has grandchildren that will go to this school and he lives right, right by the school. And he's just so excited to be working on the school, getting it all ready for us. So it's one of the nice things about using our local contractors because they're people that live here and their children will go to these schools. And it, it makes people, you know, put some ownership in it that we really appreciate. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
I was actually out there totally, I got lost out there, frankly. I like to say, I went out there to look at their school because this was on the agenda. No, I got lost. And then I realized where I was and I, I got a little excited just because I was driving by it. It's like, our new school is going to be here. It, it looks just like the picture. It was like yesterday when I did that.
Beautiful. As you said, ready. Okay.
Okay. So this project was publicly bid. It was issued on October the 1st and was out on the streets for everyone to look at for about six weeks. As I indicated, we had a good amount of interest in this project, which was really exciting. In total, we had 79 formal requests for information during the bidding process. And we answered every single question through six formal addenda that were issued. We held a mandatory pre-bid meeting on the 17th of October. We had just tons of subcontractors there clearly interested and we had eight general contractors in attendance. So we thought that one was really successful. We opened the bids publicly on November 14th and actually had almost standing room only in, in the conference room for the bid opening, which was exciting. We received three bids, which was exciting compared to the last couple. We've had some trouble getting as much competition as we wanted. So we, we called it bidding Christmas in our building. And all three were under budget. And so as soon as the first bid opened, we knew that we were going to have a bid, our winning bid would be under budget, which was really exciting. The engineer's estimate for the project was $35.1 million and the low bid came in at about $32 million. So we're very excited about that. But just as exciting is that we've got a really high-quality contractor for this project. And although they had competition, Q&amp;D was the low bidder and they are the same contractor who built Pulakitas and who is actively building Bow Hatch. So they certainly know a lot about the school and what works and what doesn't. And so they'll bring their experience to this project, which will bring a really, a lot of value to the project.
That's great. And 84% local contractors, that's wonderful.
Yep. So that's always very exciting. They do a lot of work with local subs and we really appreciate that. So we are going to start in January of 2020, so they will not waste any time. We'll be doing contracts and bonds and insurance and notices to proceed and they will get rolling in January, which is really exciting. We're giving, we were able to finally bid a project with a little bit more of a construction time, probably not as much as they want, but certainly more than we've given them on the previous schools. So that's good that we're finally being able to give contractors a little bit more time. And by starting now, we do have this winter to contend with, but we will at least have the roof completely done. And so next winter won't be a, a problem, thankfully.
That's great.
We expect substantial completion on this project in May of 2021. And then we will furnish the whole thing and open it for the '21-'22 school year in August of '21.
That's amazing. With a name to be decided at a future date.
So just some, some highlights that we wanted to point out is certainly there's been value earned from the construction of Pulakitas and Bow Hatch that will be applied to this project. Obviously, working with Lifestyle Homes and getting this piece of property substantially discounted and pad-ready is a huge win for this project. We were lucky enough to have competition from three solid contractors, which is also good for the value of this project. And, you know, most importantly is the overcrowding relief that the school will provide in an area that desperately needs it. So with all of that said, we're just here tonight asking you to please approve the award for this construction project of the Cold Springs area elementary school to Q&amp;D Construction for $32,083. And we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Are there questions at this point? Yes, okay. Go ahead, JJ. Call for public comment. Tobin Bastin. Toby. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
It's great to be here. Thank you. I just wanted to thank the, the school board and, and the staff of Washoe County School District for your, your faith and trust in us if you, if you do award. We're extremely thrilled to be a part of another elementary school project. And also it's just great to see the vision that's, I think, transforming our region. I was, you know, raised here and really feel strongly about our region and, and all the great things that are happening. So thank you for that, but also just want to let you know how, how proud we are to be a part of that. And, you know, at Q&amp;D, obviously we're in business and, and there's an underlying goal to business, but there's also a, a deeper meaning to what we do. And we really are proud to be part of public projects that really improve our region. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. And also if you do have questions either tonight or at any time, please feel free to, to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bastin. Please convey our thanks to your whole team at Q&amp;D for the great work that you're doing for our community. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Cottrell.
Yeah, so I want to thank staff, Q&amp;D. I know this community up in Cold Springs are really, really need this and they really want some relief because K4 and being that full and the challenges of having fifth grade and middle school, this is going to be great, great for our area. So I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
All right. I move with the Board of Trustees, awards bid 2022-B10-D-A, construction of new Cold Springs area elementary school to Q&amp;D Construction LLC for $32,083.
All right, motion by trustee Cottrell, second by Dr. Taylor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none with glee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Woo-hoo! Another school. And thank you again to our capital projects team and our purchasing and contracts team for bringing in a great, great proposal for us and a great process. Okay, let's go to 5.08. We'll come back to the riveting presentation by Dr. Angela Taylor and Dr. Krista McNeil following this. Well, and we are going to talk about sleep cycles before. No, I'm just kidding. Sorry. Sorry, we're getting late. It's getting late. It's getting late. You didn't give me any candy, so there. 5.08. Presentation, discussion, and possible action to direct staff to examine the research regarding school start times and the adolescent sleep cycle and present the findings. Future meeting of Board Trustees to determine if the Washoe County School District should consider changes to school start, start times. And Rick Harris is here and has done an amazing job on this. And I just want to thank the staff for looking into this. Had yet another email just today asking about why does schools start so early and we need more sleep? And I know that it's a very, very complicated issue and we know there are a lot of moving parts to this, but I appreciate the willingness to look at it, to look at the research and really to be student-focused on this. What's the right thing for our kids globally when we look at all of the information? So Rick, thank you and the team for, for going into this and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. McNeil, Board of Trustees. As I begin, I want to thank Ben Hayes and his apartment. As usual, they did a wonderful job with assisting, providing really quality research and information for the presentation. As we move- As we move through, you know, this is part of our ongoing improvement process. We need to look at issues like this and keep aware of what's happening, not only locally, but nationally. And then we also have to be mindful of what's going on. California just made a big move with mandating start times. I organized this very similar to the technology presentation we had at the last meeting. Put them in big categories. Color coordinated them for you. As you said, it's a moving, complex issue, so I'm hoping that that'll help as we move through the presentation. Additionally, you'll see in the presentation, I tried to make it easy for you to click where we could on links so you could look at the resource sources and where we got the information. And with that, we'll start with the hypothesis of the research that indicates that delayed school start times does result in more sleep time for students. And it's interesting because it is mixed with the time school starts and the time that kids go to bed. That's what that big wordy top paragraph is. But regardless, the research is clear that with later start times, kids sleep longer. So we're gonna jump into the science of it, of the sleep cycle. Unfortunately, you know, 70% of our kids do not get the necessary sleep that they need. And it, the research finds that they struggle to fall asleep no matter what you do until around 11 o'clock because of the changes in their bodies with a natural sleep cycle. Puberty starts, this process, and they wake up later, and they produce the chemical inside their body. It goes until about 7:00 in the morning, starts much later just because of their age. Here's the good stuff. Many of the, much of the research talks about, you know, better attendance, less tardies. There's quite strong research on student mental health. There's a lot of research around teenage drivers and accidents and also graduation rate. Now, I call this slide the "not-so-fast" slide because it's not a slam dunk. There is research out there, and strong research, that there's another side of this coin, you know, that some of the research does say it doesn't have an impact on how long the kids sleep. There's mixed research on test scores and achievement data as well. So California really shook things up when they mandated start times. They actually have required middle schools to start at 8:00 and/or later, and high schools at 8:30. They have given schools time to implement this, so they need to be in place by the 2022-23 school year. Also, there is controversy. It was opposed throughout the process. And it's interesting, too, there is an exemption in there for rural school districts due to the cost of busing and changes to those districts. As I dug deeper, I tried to get a definition for you for rural districts, but it looks like it's pretty fuzzy at this time. So nationally, after California did that, Ohio introduced a bill. There's also conversations going on throughout, and this is not a new topic. As you know, we've talked about this a lot. And Seattle actually have started their schools at 8:45 or later for high school kids. Moving on to the related information, just trying to get some current thing, research for you. Orange County Public Schools of Florida tried to change their start time. They're a big system. As I dug into that and saw that they started at 7:20, I was surprised, but they got, the majority of the parents there really liked the way it was, or they strongly supported it. You can see the different choices there. I think this is just a good example of, you know, what's happening in another large district when you try to change a start time. I thought it'd be helpful if you had our start time. It's not as simple as 1, 2, 3, as you know, but most of our middle schools do start around 7:30, and then there's two that start at 7:45 and one at 8:00. The majority of our high schools start at 8:00, but there is one that starts at 7:35 and one at 7:40. And the majority of our elementary schools start either at 9:00 or 9:30, again with some exceptions in there. I thought it'd be helpful to have the other 16 school districts' information in here so you can kind of see. And I know that our state is amazing in the size of the schools, the type of schools, you know, you go for really small districts. And some of these times are different because a few of the districts have four-day school weeks, so they have to go longer. So you have to be aware of that. But it is interesting information, and I thought it'd be important for you to have it. This chart, the way you read this, if you start on the left-hand side, each of these have a school start time, and some of the districts have a range. Like, for instance, there's some schools in Clark that start before 7:00. This is all high schools. But depending on the location and for logistics, they start as late, some as 8:40. So that's how, as you move down, you can see the time. Some are fixed, but some have a range. Elko, their range is between 7:20 and 8:10, along with Eureka. Douglas, their school, high schools start at 7:30. Then when you get to the next slide, you start getting some of our schools involved. So Carson starts at 7:35. We have one of our schools. That's what the parentheses is on the right of our, it says Washoe, so that's one high school, starts at 7:35. At 7:40, Pershing, Pershing County starts. There's also one high school there of ours. Then Lincoln at 7:45, three of Washoe's there. And then as you get down, you see the majority of our high schools start at 8:00. And then the latest high school start time is in Fallon with Churchill County at 8:10. So ongoing research and awareness, this is something that we're constantly looking at as a school district for different reasons, as much as looking at information last year. We looked at stacking different times and moving things around, mainly around the logistics of start times to modify our current times. Seven years ago, we had an extensive study with the district. The supervisory team worked for about 18 months because it was really encompassing, and we thought that there could be a possibility that we would change it. A lot of information happened. It was a big undertaking. And like we talked about before, there's a lot of moving pieces here. But it came down to a lot of reasons why we didn't move forward, mainly around the cost that would, for more bus routes. Also, a concern of the number of drivers that we could get if we did move forward. And then I have to say, the kicker was we didn't want to have elementary kids at bus stops, you know, six years old at 6:00 in the morning. And that's kind of what really pushed it over to leave things the way they were back in 2011, '12. When we did look at this before, when it comes up, there's, again, a lot of moving pieces, including some things you don't think about, but contract hours play into this because of our different contracts we have with our employees. Some are more obvious than others with before and after-school care. Of course, our programs after school, athletics, community. Then you also have the other side of the coin. Well, we heard a lot before about, well, kids need to just get ready for the workforce also with that time in the morning. I tried to highlight that this is an enormous system change. And once again, the logistics of our district, just kind of being aware of our square miles. I know you are. Number of buses that we run. But I also put in there, similar to California's exemption, this is a logistical challenge with, obviously, transportation costs involved in there and scheduling. So with that, I would like to...
Okay, Rick, thank you. Excellent, excellent review of the issue, and very much appreciate the research. And I think all of us understand this is a, this is a big, big shift to turn. The purpose of bringing this to all of you was to really ask, does the board have an appetite to look into this further? I think the people that I hear from the most are middle school students and middle school parents, because those kids are out, particularly in the areas where they have to travel a long way on the bus. They're out so early, especially in the wintertime. And that's a real, you know, I don't want anybody to be out early in the morning, but as you said, we don't want elementary school students out there at 6:30, but I'm not sure I want, you know, sixth graders in middle school out there at 6:00 or 6:15 or 6:30 in the morning either. Board members, questions or comments? What's your thought? Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's great that we're having this conversation because, you know, many of us, we see the research, you know, we see when there's a special or an article or something like that. And we have parents that ask about it, like, "How do you just ignore that?" And, you know, we get emails on it from time to time as well. I think it's something that we want to take a look at. I don't know that, from a timing standpoint, do we jump right into it right now, roll our sleeves up and, you know, because it took 18 months.
Yeah.
Last time, from what I understand. And I think an effort such as that, such as something like this, even the conversations need to be thorough.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they really do need to be thorough because this shakes up everything in the community, quite frankly. I mean, we're the largest employer, so it shakes that up, right? We have 64,000 students, and I don't know how many families. It shakes that up, and that's okay if that's what it is that we want to do. Now, I'm not, I'm not opposed to if that's where we land, let's do that. But man, an awful lot of input, you know, needs to occur, and I want us to be able to do it right. And I know that we have a strategic plan to get to next year. We're in the middle of a superintendent search now. We just have some big things happening, and so I'm wondering from a timing standpoint, when do we jump, when's the, when's the best time to jump into it when we can do it right and do it thoroughly? I think it should be done. Let me go, let me say that. I think it should be done. I think we have to take a look. Doesn't mean we're gonna change, but I think we have to take a look. I mean, we can't ignore the research and, at least, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't want to. I would just say, let's, let's discuss timing around it. If we agree, we should do it so that we can do it right. We're gonna have forums on our superintendent search. We have budget forums every year. I mean, so it's like, man, you know, when, how do, when, how do, where do we fit this in?
Well, 18 months, you know, if it takes 18 months to study it, that means we wouldn't have anything in place until the, what, 2021, '22 school year? Right, that's if we start now, yeah. And, and for me, you know, again, I, I want to look at this through the lens of what's best for our students. You know, just as we did with our balanced calendar discussion, you know, we tried to look at that from the perspective of what's best for our students. There, there are a whole lot of considerations, and I, I respect that. Trustee Cottle and then Student Trustee Noble.
Thank you. I would like us to look at this, too. For me, I, it's not the start times being early. I think for me, the confusing thing is, is having elementary school A starts at 9:00, then next-door elementary school B starts at 9:30, and then the middle schools in the area are all starting at different times. And that creates chaos with our transportation department. And does it save resources for the district if the start times where every high school starts at one time, elementary school, middle school, does it make it easier for transportation with bus driver shortages? Maybe not. But I think it's worth having the conversation, and I think it's worth us discussing when we want to have this done by. Because as Dr. Taylor stated, if we don't start now, the '21, '22 school year is out, and then we're looking at '22, '23. And as time goes on, things happen, and then before you know it, four years are down the line, discussion never happened. So I think it's really something that we have to say, yes, we want to do it, and here's when it's going to happen. So it does happen. If changes happen, great. If they don't, fine. But I think it's worth us talking about it.
And, and Trustee Cottle, we did look at the stabilizing or synchronizing the start times, and, and it does save some money to do so. It, it's, again, even that is a huge change, just to have all of the schools that are elementary start at the same time and middle. Yeah, it's a big difference, you know, all the daycare providers have to regroup. Yeah, it's huge. Yes, Nathan?
Definitely. So as you can all probably imagine, this is a very personal issue for me. What I would say, in addition to all those other considerations, one thing that wasn't on there was extracurricular activities that are not school-related, because those are, in some respect, coordinated around school end times. And if suddenly school moves up later, then it runs into that. Some people have to drop extracurriculars. Also, the amount of time it takes to bus students from a little bit outside our purview, like the Pyramid Lake Reservation and such. But from personal experience as a middle schooler, being tired in the morning does not help with learning. And the primary kicker that you mentioned, not wanting to have little elementary schoolers out in the cold and dark, is completely understandable. But I would imagine the goal would be to move start times up so that no student has to wait outside in the cold and dark. Because when that happens, as we have seen, accidents can occur. It's dangerous to be outside, especially in the winter. And so in addition to that, and the fiscal benefit of staggering bus schedules as well, the very, very large timetable this would involve, I think that it is worth exploring because it would save us money, it might help students to concentrate better, and I think it would help improve traffic safety as well. Now, we do have a lot going on, but it sounds like this would take a sufficiently long time that it would give us enough of an opportunity to resolve most of these things before this came back to the back burner. So I'd like to thank you for the amount of research that you did. And I'd like to absolutely encourage the board to direct, whatever department you would like to direct, to explore this in greater detail so that we can make a positive impact for the students of the district.
Thank you, Nathan. Vice President Raymond?
Very well said. And thank you for the work. I think this was really informative, and I really liked having the resources and appreciated that you notated them at the end, so thank you for that. I think we would all agree that if we could, we would start middle school later. And I definitely think we should look into how we can do that. I, my, and it's not a, "But I don't think we should do it," or anything like that. I just want to make sure when we move forward with this that we are open and honest with the community about what we actually can do. Because I think by going through this process and saying, "Yes, it is absolutely, you know, valid, we need to move start times back, but we can't afford it. So we just spent 18 months on this whole thing, and we actually can't change anything because we don't want kids out in the dark, and we don't think..." So I guess, in saying that, I'm wondering if, is step one to really look at cost and what works and doesn't work? Because I don't know that it makes sense for us to go down the road. I mean, our last board meeting, we had, you know, in-depth look at our strategic goals, and because of cuts we've made there, we're seeing, you know, the impacts on, you know, the test results and different, we think, you know, and areas where we, we want to maybe consider putting more money in in the future, and this would be another thing to consider, I think. But that, you know, the money part of it is just, to me, from what I've heard, the biggest challenge. And so I think, yeah, stage one, I just feel like should be a look at what does it actually... And so I think, yeah, stage one, I just feel like should be a look at what does it actually, how does it work if we look at the budget of it and where the buses are? When I was looking at the other districts in the state, it looks like the middle school and the high school start times often are the same and that, so the buses that take the elementary kids are doing both middle and high school. And I don't know if that's an option for us, but maybe that would be worth looking at if we have enough buses where maybe all middle and high school starts at 8:00 a.m. and all elementary is at a different time. But the 18-month-long process and getting to the end of that and then saying, well, there's not much we can do, just makes me nervous because I think there's already an impression that we put all this out there, we get all these survey results and then we just don't do anything because we either don't agree with the survey results or we, for whatever reason. I'm rambling, it's getting late.
No, no, that was good. Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, I have a separate point, but I agree with everything that Vice President Raymond said. There's nothing more demoralizing for our community to have all this hope that things are going to go a certain direction and at the end go, oh, I guess we can't do that. And it's like, why do we even have this discussion? But speaking from someone who works with young people, just because the opportunity is there to get more sleep doesn't mean it's actually going to happen. So I think it's very important that we send information to our families, talking about the importance of getting sleep because I know I get this all the time. Well, if they don't take classes late, then they're going to go to bed earlier. No, they can go to bed earlier, but they don't go to bed earlier. So I think it's, that's part of it, is having the conversation of why sleep is important. So the district's looking at making a change, that's only half of it. The other half is the students actually have to still go to bed at a decent hour because if they stay up later to account for the start time being pushed back, we actually didn't gain anything. They're still getting the same amount of sleep. So I think that's a part of the conversation with our families.
And I think that's part of what your research found, is that it doesn't always correlate. But there are, there are certainly a lot of considerations to this. I, I did want to let you know, Rick, that while we were sitting here, the Gwynne Center for Public Policy tweeted, "For all those involved in Nevada education interested in delayed school start times, the presentation from Washoe County School District is an excellent summation of national studies as well as when all districts in Nevada start the school day today." So you got kudos from the Gwynne Center. Drop the mic, that's right. Okay, and, and one other thing, just in, in terms of timing of when we look at this, you know, as we've talked about, it's likely that a new superintendent would be looking at a strategic plan next year.
Because 2020 is when that ends, right?
Right, well, and, and, you know, a new person comes in, start of the fall year, so that would be 10 months from now-ish before that might start. And if there is an appetite at the legislature to look at this, which could happen, that would be the 2021 legislature. So just from my perspective, I think it's worth looking at and I think now is a good time for us to, to move forward with just getting more research. I think Vice President Raymond's comments were well taken, that we need to ground this in reality. Lots of kids with after-school jobs, as you pointed out, extracurricular activities that are not school-related, but other things that kids are doing, families that are impacted, daycare businesses, as well as our 8,000 employees. So I think there's a lot to consider, but I, I hope that we will vote to move forward to begin some research and, and actually even formulating what's the process by which we're going to look further at this? What, what things will we look at and what sequence? And when will we do community outreach to talk about this? How would we estimate what the costs are if we don't have models of what could be implemented? So there's a, there's a lot of pieces to even designing a process of study for this. But I, I hope that we will begin looking at it because I, I do think that there are real human life issues related to this. Kids that are put at risk from safety standpoint, kids that are not getting enough sleep and are, as you said, are showing up for their MAP testing in the seventh and eighth grade, eighth grade with difficulty concentrating. So I, I hope we will move forward. Dr. McNeil?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank Rick Harris for taking the time and Ben and his shop. There was a tremendous amount, you know, I, I was talking to one of the trustees the other day and a PowerPoint looks nice and shiny, but there is a tremendous amount of work and time and effort that goes into creating such a presentation. And I really, really do appreciate the board's deliberative process and understanding the large lift that this is for the district at this point in time in this kind of interim phase as the superintendent search is, is happening, as well as our strategic plan. And so I appreciate the fact that the board is thinking about those. There's a lot right now in the field happening, very good things that are happening and moving the district forward. And I'm, I am in support, not that my vote matters, but that I am, I am supporting taking a look at this because as a parent and as a former principal and teacher, I absolutely understand that and, and I know that Mr. Etchart has had concerns as far as start times for many years. I know Mr. Hayes and we have our chief academic officer there in the audience as well. So there's, there's a great need to look at this, but it's the timing on which we do that. So thank you.
Sounds like you're saying the same thing tonight.
Yeah, yeah. And, and is there ever a good time? That's the other challenge, you know, it's, it's, everything requires a first step. And, and we do recognize the impact on the staff of something this big, we absolutely do. And I, I know that if the board decides that we can at least give direction to the interim superintendent to begin, I think I can speak for my colleagues that we have great patience with the process and that we respect all, all that is on your plates. And I, I just feel a duty to our, to our students and, and to our district to, to look at it. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I think we're saying, for the most part, the same thing in that this is something we really need to take a, a look at and the scope of it, as we recognize, is large and the impact on our community is large and the, the importance of getting input is also large. So perhaps what's something to consider is to ask the superintendent to, to work with staff or to reach out, so whatever, whatever she would like to do to, to maybe bring back something in terms of what kind of, what it would look like, how it would begin and maybe a timeline potentially for us to consider, you know, taking all these things into consideration, what's already out there, we know we haven't...
A plan.
Yeah, exactly, a plan. We have, you know, a permanent superintendent will be in place and yada, all of those things are all necessary, but what it would keep us from doing is saying, well, bring it back another time. You know, even though it may be at a slower pace than maybe ordinarily, but it may still be something that we continue to make some headway on. So perhaps it's one of those, yes, we do it and we ask for some staff guidance on what that might look like with all those things being taken into consideration.
And some benchmarks for that plan and...
Absolutely.
Good, well said. Okay, Nathan?
Just on that note, if this moves forward in an exploratory capacity, of course, I would recommend that the superintendent consult both the Student Advisory Council and the Equity and Diversity Department to make sure that this is not disproportionately hurting any one group over another. This has also worked with the student population. Once again, very exploratory and we don't want to raise false hopes, as Trustee Raymond said, but I do absolutely appreciate all of your guys' recognition that this is an important issue to look into.
Good, good comments, Nathan, thank you. Is there any public comment, JJ? Is there any public? Okay, is there, is there appetite for a motion at this time? Dr. Taylor?
I was trying to lean in and turn that on, Madam President. Thank you for recognizing that. I move, I move that the Board of Trustees directs the interim superintendent to continue the examination of school start times and that we receive a presentation on the findings to include those considerations that have been discussed at a future meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, second by Trustee Minneto. Further discussion? Again, huge thank you to the staff, to Mr. Harris and Mr. Hayes and your team for putting this together and compliments for a very thorough job on this. We will dip our toe into looking at this and, and again, just, I know that people will be excited that we're talking about it, primarily people that are 12 to 14 years old. But, but great that we are looking at it thoughtfully, with great due diligence and we'll look at all of the angles, we'll look at the financial considerations, the logistical, the operational, as well as the, the student impacts and the community impacts and we'll keep the community involved in, in this going forward. So, thank you. Yes, I know, I'm getting there. With all that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Great, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Like you were rapping or something like that.
I was rapping, I was rapping. Rap on.
I think that just went viral, didn't it? Their presentation, yeah, that went viral.
It did.
Yes?
Yeah. They've been, they've been tweeting about a lot of things in our meeting tonight. Okay, are you ready, Dr. Angela Taylor and Dr. Kristin McNeil for your presentation? Oh my gosh, and the TV camera's leaving, I can't believe it.
You're a throng.
I can't believe it. Okay, actually, I do appreciate our next item, which is a presentation discussion on the information received at the Council of Great City Schools Annual Conference conducted in October 2019. And this is something that we don't always do, but I think it's really helpful to us when, when some of our colleagues attend important training or, or national conferences. And this one is an important one. We are now members of the Council of Great City Schools and that is a, a pretty august group. So Dr. McNeil and Dr. Taylor, you have the floor.
Well, thank you so much, President Simon Holland, members of the board, interim superintendent Kristin McNeil, and accompanying me is the lovely Dr. Angela Taylor.
Lovely. Did you get that, JJ?
Put that in. So, Dr. Taylor and I, we, we went to our first board meeting for the Council of Great City Schools and it was a fabulous presentation and learning a little bit more about the Council of Great City Schools. I've had experience with the council for a few years now. We've used them in the past in our district when we talk about key performance indicators and we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation, but a little bit around the legislative efforts for the Council of Great City Schools. They spend a lot of time around federal advocacy, so not only around Title I funding, but IDEA and also policy statements. They write a lot of amicus briefs for the Supreme Court and other types of important issues that are coming. Information to districts, we attended a town hall meeting on Census 2020. They do a lot of advocacy work around E-Rate and current events and issues within public So some of the highlights around the Council of, of Great City Schools and their activities, just to reiterate, they put out a lot of different types of communications to different districts. They look at legislation, they do a lot of research, such as bell times, achievement and professional development, leadership and government management and school finance, bilingual immigrant and refugee education, and then organization and administration, different types of topics. And each one of the trustees, as well as the public, we were able to publish a nice little tabulated book that goes into quite, quite a detail as far as the schools that are involved, the districts that are involved in the Council of Great City Schools, the what about the Council of Great City Schools. And Dr. Taylor's going to walk a little bit more later into the presentation around what the benefits are, the return on investment. So we pay dues in order to attend the conferences and also be a member of the Council of Great City Schools, so it's important for the public to understand what are the benefits of joining the Council of Great City Schools. So there you see all of the school districts, large school districts. One of the benefits around the Council of Great City Schools is that you're actually sitting across the table from urban districts that have 50 or 60 or 100 schools. And while it's a great benefit to sit and, and network with other superintendents around the, around the country, depending on the size of school district, it's really important to make sure that you're talking to urban school districts as well that have like-size issues and like-size concerns. So some of the different types of conferences, which is really interesting around the Council of Great City Schools, they actually have networking opportunities. So for example, our chief financial officer or our chief operating officer, these are conferences that are targeted to those specific positions. And so they have an HR presentation, they have curriculum and, and research. One of the other things that's interesting about the Council of Great City Schools is they will do peer reviews. And a lot of our chiefs have been on different types of peer reviews and we actually had a peer review done in the school year of 2013 in which we had five separate departments. School police was one of those departments, we had transportation. And so they will bring in a team of peers in, throughout the nation and take a look at, you know, some of the different types of operating procedures. So one of the most interesting parts of the Council of Great City Schools, we have stacks and stacks and stacks of what we call KPIs, key performance indicators. And as trustees, you all are familiar with many of these through our strategic plan and when we have strategic plan updates. So they're collected, analyzed and reported on the council's academic key performance indicators, on student achievement, for attendance, suspensions, course participation, advanced placement attainment, graduation rates. All of these should sound very familiar because we have used key performance indicators in the past for academic. So they're automated and piloted on an online data dashboard for the council's academic KPIs. And I'm going to show you a little representation of that. So on the left side of the screen, you'll see numbers and those numbers are relegated to particular school districts. Each district has a number and that's how you are rated within their K, their KPIs. On the operations key performance indicators, our COO and CFO use many of these. When I was in the grants department, we used many of our, of the KPIs. So for example, are your grants, when you receive the funding, how long does it take you to get the funding out into the particular department? So those are all different types of KPIs that we use. At the second bullet point, we've conducted numerous strategic support teams since January of 2019 on facilities, IT, transportation, finance, other areas including facilities, Broward County, Buffalo. So these are all school districts that have been able to use many of their SSTs and that's what came into our district in 2013. And there you see another example of the KPIs. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor. For the record?
Oh, yeah, for, for the record, Angie Taylor, school board trustee. One of the things that the interim superintendent McNeil and I really wanted to share is why is it that we're adding, you know, a membership to another national organization and, and what's the benefits of those? She spoke a lot about some of the, some of the things that we learned. One of the first things that, in the, the first day, as I, as I began to just attend sessions is many of us have been to our, the national conference that we, that we typically go to, many of us have been there and gone to some great sessions, but we find that it's not apples and oranges and they have some great programs and policies and you see, oh wow, but wow, the district is a lot smaller than ours. It will make a really, you know, it makes a really big difference when you start adding, you know, 40,000 or 50,000 more students and, and you don't, you don't get that here. Another thing is, is the set, the room setup for a lot of the sessions was very different. It was very, you sat really around the room, not in theater style very much unless they were really large, like the census session. So you really got a chance to ask questions of the people that were presenting. It was really more of a dialogue, the entire presentation. So it just felt a lot different and you can ask a lot more questions, even specific to your own. And the conference was a lot smaller. How many people do you think were there? It was...
Over 500.
Yeah, but I mean, it was, it was fewer than 1,000 people there, which is much different, much different than, than the national conference that we typically go to. So if you turn to the, to the tab towards the back that talks about benefits and services, this is an example of a report that we would get every year from the Council of Great City Schools. This, this, obviously we just joined, so we don't have a report like this, but this is an example of one that we would get every, every year at the annual meeting, that we would... we would attend. And they chose the Cleveland School District because the president of the board, this is from their district. So, for an example, you look at, I think, one of the biggest benefits of our membership is advocacy, the national advocacy, the federal advocacy in particular. And what they did for this particular school district is talk about benefits that they receive that they would not ordinarily have received without that level of advocacy. You know, we don't have a national lobbyist. And so, it doesn't mean that they got, you know, an additional $12 million, let's say, in and of itself, but they got an opportunity to influence those decisions that were being made. And so, when you look at how much it costs to attend, and you do the return on investment, I mean, that's a dollar spent for every $329 back in return. So, when we're talking to our colleagues and they want to know why is it important to be a part of these organizations, and I think that's a very fair question, we can look to something like this. And I'm very excited about what our first report will look like. And we can say, this is what we get out of this and why that's really important. And then you look at some of the areas, Title I, Title II, IDEA, I mean, some of the areas that are really important to us as a board, the bilingual support, those are particular areas. Any additional funding and influence at a national level we can get, and those areas, I think, matters. Talk about what just happened to you in that email.
So, just this week, we received an email from Michael Casterly, the executive director of the Council of Great City Schools. And what he asked is for our districts to start advocating. There's a House resolution on the table right now in front of Congress regarding the funding of IDEA, special education funds, as well as Title I. And so, we were able to reach out to our Senate delegation and find out where were they sitting on this House resolution. And thankfully, they are very much in support of it. But it's that very quick turnaround that through the Council of Great City Schools, we're able to email back and say, we're on board. We find that this is important, so we are on board and making sure that all of our students receive the benefit of Title I funding and IDEA funding.
I think another important thing on that is if our federal delegation doesn't know where we stand or how it would impact us negatively or positively, they may not know how to advocate. They may not know how to vote. So, just that quick turnaround, because it's a smaller group, and because the superintendents recognize that when they get that email, it's important for them to respond. And then she reported back to the National Office, okay, this is what we got from our delegation. So, they can track that as well. So, you look at just some of the, this is just a partial list. You have the whole list in front of you, but these are some of the ones that we thought were, some of the ones that we thought were important to pull out. And Kristin just gave a great example of information on resources and things that are happening, best practices when you can get your peer reviews, information on new federal legislation, and also deliberation that's happening. One of the things that I found in going through the list is they have legal webinars on everything. Every new topic that comes out or a change that may happen, there is a webinar that people on the legal teams from the member districts can be a part of and learn a little bit more about it and how it may impact us and not have to do all the research themselves. I mean, because, you know, we don't have, you know, I'm sure you have an attorney just sitting around just waiting for information, the research. I mean, but it's, so it's really helpful. And then to hear what other like districts are experiencing as a result of that. So, the training, the webinars, the conferences, the reports that we have, the KPIs, as Kristin just talked about. And then they have a monthly, I said newsletter, they call it a newsletter, but it's more like a magazine, that we're going to begin to get as well, that talks about these things that are going on at a national level. Again, it's gonna feel, it's just gonna feel different because they're like, they're like districts with some of the situations and issues that are much more parallel to what we have. And then again, these are the areas that they really point out in terms of, in each of these areas, they focus on how are we assisting our members in communications, legislation, research, professional development, all, they make it a point of saying, we will break down every area, every year, that we benefit you and your membership. It's a big focus on, we want, as a conference, as a council, I should say, they want to make sure that we're able to talk to our constituents about this is what we're getting out of our membership, the cost that we're paying. So, I just, I think it's fantastic.
Can I ask just a couple of questions? I see that Clark County is a member, and did you have an opportunity, were they there? And did you have an opportunity to talk about what they, benefits they have seen from their membership?
Dr. Jara was present in his delegation. He brought a couple of his trustees with him as well. We didn't have a great opportunity to sit down and discuss, but I just know from the past that they've actually benefited. We had our superintendent's meeting last week, and Council of Great City Schools came up as far as conversations around teacher evaluations and such things as that. So, it's nice that we now have two school districts within the state of Nevada who are members of the Council of Great City Schools, and that we're actually able to provide benefits to our rural school districts as well. And that's part of that advocacy effort as well.
That's great.
If I can just piggyback on that, I had a chance to have a brief conversation. They had four trustees that were there. And they've always thought that this would benefit, this benefits them greater, so they had greater participation here than we typically see from them at the other national conferences.
Yeah, interesting. And I see that one of the things that their group, that the Council on Great City Schools did was designed a professional development program with the Harvard Business School for member school boards and superintendents, which is pretty.
Very impressive. And that's new, and they were very, they were very excited about that. I said in the session that talked about that as one, I mean, not a lot of details, but yet that's coming, and they're very proud of that association.
Yeah, let's stay tuned on that. And one of the other things I noticed, which is wonderful, is that the urban city, the urban schools in the United States are the center of the equity and diversity challenge in this country. And I think that's an area where we can benefit so much from working with them. I was just looking at the characteristics of the enrollment of Great City Schools, and I'm sure you saw this, that, you know, they're only 18% Caucasian, that we have a diverse country, we have diverse cities, and we can really learn from what these folks have been able to achieve in their district. So, really excited about it.
One of the things that I learned in the sessions that I attended was equity is always a central part of the conversation. It isn't a, hey, what about it? It's always, it's just built in. It's part of, you know, yes, it's almost like, it's like a given. It isn't, it's a part of it, but it isn't, let's have the special side on equity. No, it's built into everything that they talk about because of, you know, when you talk about urban, that's within the core of cities, and that's where most of the diversity exists in our country.
That's great. Other questions? Yes, Nathan?
So, I'm just curious, does the Council of Great City Schools do any work with teachers' unions nationwide or any sort of collective bargaining organizations?
So, they don't necessarily, great question, Nathan. They don't necessarily partner, let's say, with a teacher organization or union, but they do advocate together. So, if there are similar bills that are in front of Congress, they will work with different types of associations to put more people in front, if that makes sense.
Yes, yes, please.
So, they don't partner directly, but they do definitely coordinate to co-advocate for legislation, as it were, and push similar lobbying interests?
Absolutely. So, I'll give you a great example. So, the Census 2020, that's a big lift for many school districts. And we know that our own teachers' association is very much in support of Census 2020 because it actually relates to dollars. So, the Council of Great City Schools, along with other teacher associations across the country, are making sure that the word gets out, that we need to make sure that people are filling out the Census 2020 because it has a direct relationship to funding for different states.
All right. If you'd allow me one more.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Sorry. And if, so, does this only relate to the national level, or do they also co-coordinate with unions on a legislature level on a statewide basis?
I didn't see anything, or at least at this conference, that wasn't a part of anything that I attended, was what was going on statewide. But I believe the conversation is around how can those things that were presented and discussed on the national level, how do they show up on more of a local level or a statewide level? And really, I mean, plenty of times, we're encouraged to talk to our legislators, legislators because various things are coming, and the Census being one of them. I will say this, I thought you were going to ask about students because they do make it a point to be involved in some student initiatives as well. One of the things, as you read through this, you see there's a town hall that they mentioned. They mentioned making sure to let districts, to inform districts of national-level scholarships so that their students can participate in those. And one thing you may have missed is they also had 20 students that got tickets to the Beyonce, Jay-Z concert.
I pointed that out to our legal counsel. I did see that. That was very impressive.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we get in on that.
That was part of that $329 per dollar.
Yeah, that was probably most of it. But they're, so they're very student-centered, very student-centric, so.
That's great. Other questions? Okay. Well, thank you both for going. We weren't quite sure of what, you know, what to expect from that, and very much appreciate you both being there to represent us. And thank you for taking the time to come back and tell us what you learned and what we can expect from that membership. I think certainly my wheels are turning, and I'm sure everybody else's are as well, how we can benefit. Sounds like they are very much in the service business of serving America's urban school districts, so very grateful for that.
It's very worthwhile.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That one doesn't require any action. So, we can, while they're getting reseated, we can ask if there are any board reports anyone wants to make a comment on. Mr. Cottrell?
Yep. She knows it's coming. So, December, it's the last board meeting of the year. So, I personally, in my first year as a trustee, want to thank Katie for helping us and leading us this year as our president. And so, I know next meeting, it'll be a shift change all around. So, Katie, I appreciate what you did this year and how you led us. There's a lot of turmoil, not a lot, but some turmoil this year that we had to get through. So, I appreciate it, and so, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, Andrew. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And it's certainly, it's certainly been an honor and a privilege to sit in this chair with this great group of folks. And it's a great board, and I think we've done great work together. So, thank you for the honor.
It's actually a two-year, it's a two-year run as president. So, thank you for both of those.
Yeah, two years and then a little bit of helping back you up.
Yes, yes. And thank you very much.
Well, and thank you. I appreciate that. It's a good group, and we, I think people see that about us. I know there's still a lot of chatter about the board out in the community, but I think the people that pay attention to this board and are, you know, and are watching know that we are thoughtful, we work together, we're supporting our staff and doing good work, and it's just an honor and a privilege. So, thank you all. Trustee Minetto?
I just wanted to say a shout out to the concert I went to at Reed. It was a choir concert, and it was two hours of heavenly voices singing traditional Christmas music and some not-so-traditional. And in the middle of the whole thing, they did a little play of The Grinch. And it felt like it was 20 minutes long, but it was two hours. It was wonderful.
That's great. And I bet you were singing along once or twice. That's great. Okay. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
I will add that trustee Minetto and I were a part of the Sparks Family Christmas Parade.
Oh, yes, yes.
Hometown, yeah, not family, hometown.
In the rain.
Yeah, actually, it didn't rain during the time. It rained before and it rained after. But it didn't rain during the parade. But we will, I'm going to put in, and I don't know if we need a special agenda item for this when we get there, but we both ran out of candy.
Uh-oh. Oh, no.
That's all, I'm just, I'm just saying. But we did start with candy, interim superintendent McNeil, as opposed to a different parade that, well, yeah, where we, I had to rustle a veteran for a flag since I didn't have any candy.
I just got a quick visual on that. And, oh, my goodness.
I won, it was World War II, so I had a little edge. Had a little edge.
Oh, Dr. Taylor.
So, I'm hoping that for future parades, we may be able to have a sufficient supply.
That's good.
Just sharing.
Wow.
Thank you so much. That concludes my report, Madam President.
We are absolutely at the end of our ropes. Nathan, do you want to report on anything?
Shot. I'd like to say that the Student Advisory Board has one big upcoming thing. The district is revising its policy on student voice, and we are planning to bring a proposal soon, hopefully this board, that will establish a firm structure and hierarchy of student councils throughout the district and schools. We're super excited about that. And on a personal note, thank you guys so much for all the amazing work that you have done, both as regular members and going out of your way to include student voice in these events and make sure that we, as a very large stakeholder group within the district, are listened to. So, I would like to individually thank each of you for helping me personally in that capacity and for always having an open mind. Thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you, Nathan, and thank you for your service on this board and your service to your fellow students. You've been an awesome, very, very impactful member of this board. No, that's great. That's okay. That's okay. No, 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 that's all right. Trustee Calvert, any board reports?
Actually, yesterday, I was able to go on a home visit, and that was really.
Oh, great.
The mom, grandmother is just, I don't know, she just reminded me so much of my grandmother. She's got 20-something grandkids and 30-something great-great-grandkids. And they're just all doing very well in school, but it was just kind of good to sit down and chat with her and be around in that family environment and making sure that these students are doing well. And she loves the school. There are little changes going on there, but the student, I mean, the teacher that were there, they were like very supportive of her. But she's like, I've got to adapt to what's going on, and I kind of get that with her. But she just really loves the kids, loves the school, and just, it was just really nice to see that.
That's great. Well, thank you for taking the time to do that. I know it matters to the staff a lot to have trustees go out and do that. So, thank you, trustee Calvert. Vice President Raymond?
Well, it's been busy. I'll spotlight one thing. I was asked by Richard Clark teacher, AP government teacher at Reno High School to come and judge a debate between the Federalist and the Anti-Federalist in his class last week. And I was just blown away. The students were completely prepared and came in ready with their arguments and know more about both of those than I could ever hope to know, even with all of my Hamilton song background. But it was really cool to see them, and he is just such a great example of an engaged teacher in the district. He was in costume and had the kids like just in tears laughing at points, so it was awesome.
Oh, that's great. That's great. Well, I also, we've had a lot of busy things going on, and just want to, I want to give a shout out to Jen, as in our board services, who helps us get scheduled for things. She's just been doing an amazing job. Many of the trustees were at the bow hatch topping out ceremony, which was wonderful and exciting, in the rain. And it was, it was nice to have everybody there. Been to several visits with the superintendent and with other trustees. Went to Rise Adult Academy, Cold Springs Middle School, Van Gorder Elementary School, Traynor Middle School, Hunter Lake Elementary School, Billingshurst Middle School, TMCC High School, Wooster High School, and Smith Ridge Elementary School. And that's just so far in the first 10 days of December. So, yeah, we're all busy out there. And I know how hard it is to get all of that scheduled, so I just want to thank everybody who helps us to get there because that's the most fun part of our job, is being there, out seeing what our teachers and our students are doing. And there is amazing work going on in this district. So, thank you. Interim superintendent?
Absolutely. So, we've got a lot going on out there. We have our Lead Teach Learn meeting coming up on this Friday, the 13th. We also have, and thank you to our chief academic officer and her staff, we've got a poll for Get Out the Vote. So, we have, there you go. We've got a lot of people working hard. We've got six high schools on board for the When We All Vote initiative out there. Communications is working around Census 2020 to make sure that that gets out into our This weekend, we will be judging the We the People on the 14th, so I'll be showing up to that for a judge for We the People. And then on the 21st, we'll be going to the IB graduation, which is really cool. Yay, Wooster! Then we have Arglena High School visit coming up, Innovations High School coming up. Very excited about that. And then the leadership team, we believe in giving back to our community. So, this Friday, on behalf of our leadership team, I'll be delivering about 15 to 20 bags of food for our food bank. So, that's on behalf of our leadership team. So that's on behalf of our leadership team. As well as when we have our holiday lunch next week, we decided to have a coat drive. And so Lena Juniper students will be singing. And so we are also doing a coat drive for Lena Juniper Elementary School. So I want to do a shout out to all of our employees for helping with that. And then today, cue the picture, there we are. We had the When I Grow Up event at UNR. And so our ladies basketball team hosted over 3,005 students for our schools. And so we were presented with a basketball, and I want to do a shout out to Jerry Smith and the Redfield Foundation. They donate $42,000 every single year, $24,000 for this event. I also want to thank our nutrition services. So every single student receives a sack lunch at this event. Our transportation department, over 30 buses were involved with this. Vanji Russell has met every single month in order to coordinate this. And last but not least, on behalf of our leadership team, President Simon Pollan, we would like to present you with the game ball.
That's so cute.
For being such a supporter of our staff.
That's so great.
Signed by all of our basketball players.
Thank you. That's great. Thanks so much.
Very cool. You're very welcome. Yes, we did win. Yes, we did win.
That is so cute. I love it. Oh, excellent. And just want to add to board reports, we have two superintendent search forums coming up tomorrow at 5:30 at Trainer. And then the one the next night is virtual forum. So we put out information about that today, so folks who want to be involved in that. Okay, any future agenda items? Okay, any public comment? Okay. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 14th, in this room in 2020. And I just want to remind everybody that this is the last month of this decade, which is pretty cool to think about. So, yeah. So with that, we are adjourned.